Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, or Select Board as you prefer, of July 18th of 2023. This is a hybrid meeting, which necessitates a reading into the record of the following notice. This is to formally advise that as required by General Laws, Chapter 38, Sections 18 through 25, pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during a state of emergency, signed into law on June 16th, 2021, as extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023. The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public meeting on Tuesday, July 18th, 2023, at 5:30 PM, beginning with an executive session, and opening to the public no sooner than 6:00 PM in the hearing room, Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 through 28 South Yarmouth. The public is welcome to attend either in person or via the alternate public access provided below, and the Zoom meeting instructions and telephone link instructions are provided on the website. It's anticipated that we will go into executive session for approximately a half an hour until 6 o'clock, and then return immediately thereafter to the public portion of the meeting. I'm going to ask the board to entertain, someone on the board to entertain making a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A, to discuss update of collective bargaining with the police officers and police supervisors' unions, non-union negotiations, amendment to town administrator agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen will enter into executive session pursuant to mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A, to discuss an update of collective bargaining with police officers and police supervisors' unions, non-union negotiations, and to not do so, according to the chair, would have a detrimental effect on subject negotiations.
The chair has made that determination that to not go into executive session would have a detrimental effect on the town. So do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, we'll take a roll call vote on that. Selectman Forrest.
Aye.
Selectman Horgan.
Aye.
Selectman Dogus.
Aye.
Selectman Peter Smith.
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. We are in executive session. Welcome to the public portion of the meeting of the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, or Select Board, of July 18th, 2023. We've just come out of executive session. This begins the public portion of the meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first, first item is public announcements. On the radio this week, there were several news reports that tonight we were going to be discussing the proposed 40B project on the corner of Pine Grove Road and Route 28. At our last meeting, the board decided, in view of the fact that the developer changed the plan since the initial comments of various town departments were made, that we would ask for an extension of time until, I believe the date is August 8th, for the board to have considered this matter, and for our, and for our town boards to have updated their comments, and that extension was granted. So that matter will not be heard tonight for those reasons. Do we have any other public comments? All right, seeing none, we will go to, excuse me, that was our announcements, we'll go to the public comment. Vida Morris.
Vida Morris, I was hoping that Chef Colby would be here so that he could answer the question that I was asking a week ago about the water rates, you know, that keep going up constantly. But also, I went to the hazardous waste disposal, the project that they had at the senior center, and they, I must say, the young people were very, very pleasant, but I was hoping that they weren't giving out disinformation. So today I checked, and I was able to find out that, well, what I was being told at the senior center was that the, they were no longer taking latex paint and wherever any water-based possibility, you know, other such things that are water-based. And one of the comments that was made was that the town of Yarmouth no longer would pay for them to do that. Well, apparently that's not quite right, that the person who was able to get information for, from me was that, while we have the Taj Mahal there on the, you know, the new Taj Mahal, we don't have enough employees, because apparently in the past, there would be somebody from DPW who would drive a dump truck or something or another into the collecting area, and now they don't have anybody to do that. So it caused a bit of a situation. I mean, I, in fact, I had to go a second time because they didn't take a couple of other things, which they eventually did, but I think that it would have been much better if I could have gotten rid of the latex paint cans and stuff like that, anyway. So the, I see that we're having a presentation that sounds like it's going to be one of those newfangled things about maybe somebody else is going to come in and tell us what to do, you know, with regard to climate change or something like that. So I'll be very curious to hear that later on in some comment.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No one on the screen.
Nobody up there? Okay, good. We'll go to our next item, which is on P615, New Alcohol License. MLW South Yarmouth LLC, doing business as Wise Living, 822 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Good evening. You want to introduce yourself for the record, please?
My name is Chris Wise. I'm the manager of MLW LLC, Wise Living at Yarmouth.
Okay, thank you.
An applicant for the liquor license.
So what I'm going to do is read the legal notice into the record, and then you can tell us a little bit about your operation and
It's Chris.
What it is that you want the board to do in terms of licensing. The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, acting as a local licensing authority for the town of Yarmouth, has received an application for a new annual wine and malt general on-premise license from MLW South Yarmouth LLC, doing business as Wise Living Yarmouth, located at 822 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. Christopher Wise is the proposed manager. The hearing will be held on Tuesday, July 18th, 2023, at the town hall in the hearing room, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. The Selectmen's meeting begins at 6:00 PM. Written comments will be accepted at the licensing department at town hall, or can be submitted electronically to publiccomment@yarmouth.ma.us. Verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing. Okay, so this property, as I understand, is the former Irish Village Pub on Route 28?
Correct.
Okay, just so people know what we're talking about here. And you're seeking a malt and wine license only, right? Not a, not a full alcohol license?
Yeah, beer and wine, I'm not sure malt is the same as beer and wine. Yeah, no alcohol, just beer and wine.
Yeah, they use the word malt, I'm not sure why either, but.
Sounds good.
So when I look at, there was a letter at the, let's see if I can find that, where you talked about the hours of operation. There it is. If I can find it. You had a, I guess it's kind of a message or a note. It says Wise Living will be providing wine and malt beverage service from 4:00 to 8:00 PM daily. Is that what you're seeking?
Yes.
Okay, the hours are 4:00 to 8:00 PM. A licensed and certified bartender will be on duty during these hours of service. Servers, servers will be tip certified and safe serve trained. Alcohol will be allowed in the dining room and adjacent library sitting room only. Are those the only areas that you're seeking to serve alcohol in?
Yes.
Okay. No alcohol will leave the dining area. No service will be provided outside the dining room area. No open alcohol containers will be allowed in common areas such as the lobby, main lounge, garden cafe, indoor cafe, multipurpose center, indoor pool or outdoor pool. So does that pretty much accurately summarize the extent of the service and the limitations on the alcohol service?
Yes.
Okay.
And if I.
I don't want to lock you in, I just want to see if we can hone in and get a
Yeah. Basically, it's a dinner.
An understanding as to what you're trying to do here.
Dinner service in the dining room is going to have beer and wine. Dinner is going to be served between 5:00 and 7:00, so we just had some swing hours in there. Probably won't be seating people until 5:00 o'clock, but there, you know, permitted beer or wine, and that's the only environment that we would provide.
You have, have had past experience with alcohol, I think up in Chatham, correct?
Yes, I owned the Wayside Inn, and that was a full liquor license, and then I had a small restaurant that was beer and wine prior to that.
Okay, good. And you've met with Sergeant Hennessy and gone through the state and local rules and regulations?
Yes, met with him a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, good. And you're the sole owner of this operation?
Yes.
This, you're not only the manager of the LLC, but you own 100% interest in the LLC?
I own 100% interest in the operating MLW LLC.
Okay, and you don't, you don't have a written lease, you know, you, what, I'm not concerned about this issue, but I, I hope we don't have a problem with the ABCC. So there's a different entity that's leasing this property?
We, I believe, provided a lease, but I would be happy to provide a lease from the owner entity to this entity for clear separation.
Well, the only reason I'm mentioning that is what's a little bit unique about your application is that there is no lease in here, and it's kind of an at-will, or at least the paperwork indicates, there's not a lease for a specific term, it's kind of an at-will thing, a month-to-month, if you, if you will. And when I went to one of the seminars recently at the ABCC, that was one of the reasons of concern that they had in rejecting or holding up applications was they weren't getting, either, either they weren't getting leases, or the names on the leases didn't match with the name of the entity that was leasing. So I'm wondering if, I'm wondering if, is this the same, is this the same business?
Yes.
Okay, it wasn't in with the papers, though.
I think that Dakota.
Apparently there is a lease in the file, but it wasn't, it wasn't with our packet.
I was, sorry.
I'm not trying to be technical, it's just that I don't want you to get hung up at the next level. So this lease says Wise Living at Yarmouth Condominium Trust, as lessor, is going to lease to MLW South Yarmouth LLC. Okay, good. Let's see if those signatures match up. Yeah, they seem to, okay. Yeah, I think you're going to need this as part of your package that goes up to the ABCC.
And I was going to interject that I know that was in place, and I know that it's not just a at-will, but if it needs further definition, I will.
I thought it did, I didn't, I don't recall, well, the, the paperwork absent the lease, I don't think indicated the term. Yeah, it just says the lease shall commence on October 15th, 2022, and terminate on a mutually agreed upon date.
Maybe I'll define it further, like a five-year lease or something that is clear and doesn't have question when it goes to the ABCC, and I'll forward the file here.
That's up to you.
I can do that.
You have to make that decision. It might be prudent to do that.
I hear you, yeah. You just witnessed it.
I'll leave that up to you. If you want, if you want to submit a revised lease and have us just hold the paperwork until the lease arrives, I don't have a problem with that. They could, they could send the lease to me as chairman, and I could take a quick look at it.
I think if it's.
With the board's permission.
It would be that lease revised with the term defined, it's, it's not going to be anything new other than a term.
Again, there was a, there was a seminar in Hyannis, and the ABCC was putting it on for licensing boards and, and police departments and things, and they were going over things that hold up applications or require applications to get kicked back to the local licensing authority, and some of these delays can be up to six months if your application, so I just don't want you to run into that situation.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
And that, I'll be in touch with you? Yes. Or Dakota, or Prue, or?
Dakota's on leave.
We'll be out.
Yeah.
Pam Barnes in my office, or me?
Pam or Pam Barnes, who's in, in town administrator's office, she's, Pam's been with the town for a long time, very capable lady. So I'm going to first go to the public and see if there's anybody out there that wants to be heard on this matter, to support this application or to speak against it. Is there anybody that wants to be heard either way? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go to my board members at this point. Selectman Forrest.
I don't have any questions, I'm very supportive, so, thank you.
Dan.
No questions.
Dogus.
Hi, Chris, good to see you.
Long time.
Very long time. I have no questions, I support fully.
Thank you.
Peter.
I hope we're quite successful, but please make sure you, you follow the health department requirements and, and any other, any other requirements for surf, safe, and et cetera.
Yeah, I think on the comments, I'm glad you brought that up, Peter, there were just brief comments by both health and building that there had to be inspections before business was commenced. Those are the only, and as, as I tell all applicants, and I think you know this, that we just handle the licensing part, whatever issues you may come in, you know, may come up with the Board of Health, you have to deal with them on that. Any issues that come up with the building department, you have to deal with the building department, you don't come back to us for those things, we just handle licensing.
Maybe the police were here for the hearing too, I was a little nervous, I just had to make a comment, I'm like, okay, I'm just, I'm getting a wine license, I'm like, sorry.
That was a good one.
I had to do it.
Okay, so do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So all those in favor, say aye. All right, anyone opposed? Public portion of this hearing is closed. Now, what I suggest we might do, because if you look at his memo at the back of the application, I would like to see if we could kind of make a motion along those lines. He's got his hours for 4:00 to 8:00 PM, and the service, the service of alcohol will be limited to the dining room and adjacent library/sitting room only? I, I think that's good enough if we, if the motion includes those things. You see that?
Mr. Chairman, one small technical item.
Yes.
I just wanted to note that in the application, they indicate that they have a viable quote for the liquor liability insurance, and I, I'd like to, to see the motion include that it would be subject to a certificate of insurance, so that way, that requirement would be met.
Yeah, we have to have that. We have to have that.
Yep.
Dan, you have it in front of you? Do you want to make a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the application for a license. Included within that, we're restricting alcohol to be allowed in the dining room and adjacent library sitting room only. No alcohol will leave the dining room, no service will be provided outside the dining room area, no open alcohol containers will be allowed in the common areas such as lobby, mall, lounge, garden cafe, indoor cafe, multipurpose center, indoor and outdoor pools.
And how about hours at the top?
Service to be through 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM daily. Licensed bartender and certified, licensed certified bartender will be on duty during these hours of service, servers will be tip and surf safe trained.
And they will provide a certificate of insurance?
And also.
Liquor liability.
Right, also providing that certificate of insurance.
All right, that's your motion, that covers everything on that memo, plus the requirement that a town administrator has brought to our attention for a certificate of insurance for liquor liability. So we basically giving you exactly what your memo speaks of. So do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So you are unanimously approved based on those conditions? When you get your lease to the town administrator's office, they will send it over to me, I'll just take a quick, I'll check on it, make sure it's okay, and then we will take that with the rest of your paperwork and send it up to the ABCC for their approval.
And I'll just make that term defined, I'll do a five-year lease, or a two-year, two-year, something more than an at-will.
Whatever you want to do.
Got it, thank you.
Whatever you want to do.
Very helpful.
I'm not saying that you'd be wrong on the at-will, I'm just, I'm just saying this is, this is a potential problem area.
It's, it's inner, it's easy.
These delays on kickbacks are pretty significant.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you for your time.
Good luck, Chris.
Thank you.
Want to give that back to Bob? This is the old lease. Our next item, if we're ready, is the introduction of new police officer, Christopher Kelleher. Good evening.
It's exciting times for the Yarmouth Police Department tonight, we get to introduce our newest officer, his name is Christopher Kelleher. Christopher is accompanied by his family, who's in the back row tonight. Chris started with the department on May 8th, and is a recent graduate of the Merrimack College Police Academy. The academy up there is, it's a neat opportunity for, for student officers, where they go, they get their academy certificate while they're getting their master's degree at the same time. So when Chris graduated in May, and the deputy and I went up to his graduation, he received his master's degree in criminal justice and criminology, and his full-time police officer certificate, which is, it's quite an accomplishment to do both of those things at the exact same time. As I said, Chris has a master's degree in criminal justice and criminology, also has a bachelor's degree as well from, from Merrimack. Chris is in his second phase of the 13-week field training program, he's on track to be released sometime in the middle of August, then after that, he'll go to the patrol shift. And Chris is an outstanding officer, we are very happy and proud to have him with us. We've been able to, deputy and I have been able to meet his family and talk to his parents and his brother at length, and he comes from, he comes from good people, so we're very excited. So please welcome Chris Keller to the Yarmouth Police Department.
Why don't you come up and meet the board?
Ladies and gentlemen.
Congratulations, welcome aboard.
Nice to meet you.
Congratulations and welcome.
Congratulations.
Mr. Kelleher, congratulations.
Esther Stewart.
Hey.
It's a new world.
Chris was sworn in a couple of weeks ago, so that's why we didn't do a swearing-in tonight, the deputy, we're trying to stay on top of that, we had missed a couple swearing-ins, so we made sure that Chris got done before then, that's why we didn't do the official swearing-in today, but he's all set, he's official.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Good luck, Chris.
Our next item is a Yarmouth Police Department Mental Health Program update.
So thank you again for having us here tonight, it was about, a little less than a year ago that the deputy and I came and spoke before you, and we discussed the importance of the mental health unit and the support we needed from the town. Our clinician, Justine Padergal, and Sergeant Diana Wells are going to give you an overview of what's been going on with the, with the, the program so far. They're going to talk about where we started, where we are today, and where we hope to go in the future. I'm proud to report that through the hard efforts of the deputy chief, that we received a $180,000 grant to help, to help with our program. We are also qualified for a $45,000 increase to our 911 Support and Incentive Grant, because we dispatch our mental health clinicians directly from the station when they are working. If we have a call that needs a clinician, our mental health clinicians will, will respond directly from the station with a patrol officer, because we have that program in place, and because of the, the foundation that was built many, many years ago under the deputy chief's purview, we qualified for an additional $45,000 from, from 911. So the total, total money that we have for our program right now exceeds $200,000. So I'm going to turn the presentation over to, to Justine and Sergeant Wells, they can introduce themselves and then take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Good evening, ladies.
Hi, thank you for having us. I'm Sergeant Diana Wells.
And my name's Justine Padergal, and I'm a licensed mental health clinician through the state of Massachusetts. Thank you so much for letting us come and speak to you tonight, and just provide an update in regards to our program, and just give you a little bit of background of where we were, where we are now, and just where we're hoping to go into the future. But I also just really wanted to thank everyone here in regards to their support for this program, because without the backing of the town, without the backing of its people, this program wouldn't be where it is today, and I think that we're only going to continue to prove where we can take it and how we can really just better support the members in our own community here. So in regards to the past few years, you know, mental health and policing has been a very mental health and policing has been a very hot topic in the news. And I'm very proud to say that the town of Yarmouth started this initiative and this program way back in 2015 with a sergeant and officer and a detective. You know, they came up with this mission statement of saying, there is a need within our community that our police are responding to. And that need is mental health in this crisis. But what do we do with it? Right? Where are those services? How do we better support the people that are calling in that time of need as a police department? So they came up with this mission statement back in 2015 to better inform our officers through officer education and then relationship building within our providers within the community to really compassionately and better understand the needs of those individuals when they are having that crisis and have a police response, and then to be able to better provide professional and effective police response in those times. So of course, protocols were established. We're continuing to decide and go through these protocols about, you know, how do we keep our officers safe? How do we now keep our civilians safe? And ultimately also, how do we keep our community members safe? I'm not going to run through all of them. But this is our present-day team. Do you want to?
So our, our team is led by Lieutenant Cal Bogdan, and then I'm the direct supervisor for the team. We have two clinicians. Justine Pedergal is our full-time clinician and Patrick McGuire, who's been with us for a couple of years now. He's a part-time clinician. And we, our team is comprised of eight people. We have Detective Mike Zantini, who's one of the original founding members of the team, as well as Erica Wenberg, Chris Eccleston, John Lonada, Rick Appria, Sam Voltilina, and Mary Gibney, who are all officers working various shifts, so they're available throughout the days and week. And Sergeant Andrew Colville is also part of our team, and he handles more the veteran aspect.
And one great thing about all the members that you can read up here is none of these individuals were voluntold to be part of this team, right? They all wanted to participate. They all wanted to go through further officer education, which is a 40-hour program to become CIT-trained in the state of Mass. And that provides officers with just better understanding and education with mental health symptoms, behaviors, treatment, and options within our community. And we still have other officers, you know, assisting with day-to-day needs and responses, asking questions, and just getting better educated as we continue to develop this program. So while this is not permanent, you know, we're always continuing to see what's working, what isn't, how can we change? How we are utilizing our clinicians right now is we are using various, varying hours of coverage. We know we can never predict a mental health crisis. We know we can never predict a call for service. So we rotate different hours through the days, along with some weekend hour coverage to just better support and respond to calls as needed. Some of those shifts are our day shift, eight to four. Some we call a swing shift, 12 P. M. to eight P. M., and then some with our evening shift. At the police department, we do have a dedicated line to our clinician phone number. We find this very helpful for some people who may be aware of us, but maybe a little hesitant or concerned to call into a police department. Maybe they have hesitations. Maybe they've never utilized police services, and they just have that initial anxiety. So people can know that they can actually call into the station and dial an extension that goes directly to a separate line. We can also be better utilized when dispatch receives calls. Maybe it's not an imminent matter, and they just want to talk to someone. They can also direct that call to the clinician line. And if we are available, we're more than happy to talk to that individual and see what we can do at that moment. Typically, we have an eight-hour shift for our clinicians, and we like to set a four-hour block within that eight-hour block to actually be assigned to an officer in a cruiser. And that's really where we're seeing a lot of our work done. When we go out for calls for service, the clinicians go through those reports. We see what's happened since we haven't been working, or what happened last week that maybe we can follow up on to better support that individual, answer questions, provide resources, anything that we can do. So when we're in that additional cruiser, not only is there an extra car on the road that we can then go and outreach members within our community, during that time, if there is some sort of active call that is either somebody that we are aware of that struggles with mental health, or maybe there's a mental health component to the call, that additional car with a clinician and an officer, they can either take lead on that call or assist patrol with that call to just, again, help alleviate our patrol, assist, and provide more education for the individual and assist them in that crises. We can, we can help take reports. We do these follow-up check-ins and outreach with individuals. Like I said, assist with those crisis calls. We can consult and just help education with our officers in regards to something like Section 12s and hospital follow-ups as needed, just to make sure that the right information is handed off so that person receives the right treatment.
What is Section 12 S? What does that mean?
So that's an involuntary commitment, basically saying that someone is posing a threat to themselves or others, just meaning though the police department has the right to say, if you're a danger within our community, we want you to go seek further assessment and evaluation at our emergency room. And that's a mandated thing. So really, it just gets them in front of the, the mental health team at the hospital for further assessment and evaluation for treatment.
Great. Thank you for the definition.
And just to add, while we do have the dedicated clinician line, we always tell people that if, if it's any sort of emergency, they still need to call 911 or go through dispatch so that we can, especially because there isn't a clinician available all the time, we still encourage people, if there's any sort of emergency or immediate response needed, they still call 911 or the police line.
Yes, absolutely. We would never want someone to get delayed response because they went into a voicemail. So if anyone's ever in need of immediate assistance, as my sergeant said, always call in through the main dispatch line or 911. If it's any sort of follow-up questions, concerns, or resources, they can dial into the clinician line. And really, what we can do though, and our main goal is to prevent any further crises by establishing supports for that individual within our community. We want them to be aware of the resources, the different agencies that could possibly assist them and just support them moving forward, knowing that there's also somebody within our town and our police department that can just help them navigate that. We provide education on treatment options within our area. We attend monthly interdisciplinary meetings with different towns, different entities, including different healthcare providers, the hospital, Housing Assistance Corporation, and just other agencies that can assist people in their time of need. We also like to provide education to the public, like we're doing tonight. We also had the honor of being asked to present. Fitchburg State runs a very large law enforcement and mental health conference every year, and our team actually was just able to present our data and how we are utilizing education of officers and our clinician response in a breakout session. We are very, very pleased that the state and the Department of Mental Health, whom we get our grant funding through, sees what a great job that we're doing and wants to continue to support us and then also help us educate other departments of how they could potentially replicate this into their own town. And then we've done other community presentations in regards to our Citizens Police Academy, our Senior Citizens Police Academy, and our Neighborhood Crime Watch. And we're happy to give these conversations and continue to educate the public. And as we know, just our basic facts about our town, but what some people don't know is that our average call for service through the police department is a little over 31,000. We are looking back at the data, back when we started to collect in 2021, we had about 570, what we call psych-emotional calls. And we actually saw a decrease in those calls into 2022. So some people may say, why is that? All we hear about is how mental health is getting worse and worse. Well, the only thing that we could think of, and by no means do we say that this is a cause and effect, that there's definitely a correlation to where in 2021 to 2022, we increased our outreach, meaning our clinician hours, our time on the road, our outreach to individuals in their community, we increased that by 151% in that year. So again, by no means are we saying that we caused this, but by saying we are more open and available and assisting our public, we like to at least think that there's a correlation, that there was a decrease in those really severe crisis calls within that next year. And then just in general, we started tracking more data. We're going to continue to track more data, but we track it quarterly. So between myself and then our part-time clinician, Patrick, each quarter, we're tracking how many call interactions, whether that be phone call, house visits, talking to providers, discussing information or education with families, or actually co-response within our community. As you can see, we're just continuing to increase those interactions quarter by quarter. 319 from April to June, going up to 435 October to December. In this past quarter, 432 interactions with our community members. So we're, we're very, very happy to be out in the community, assisting in any way we can. And we're very, very thankful that we're able to get more information and education out to the public. Thank you for listening.
See if we have any questions or comments. We'll start with Selectman Forst.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for being here tonight. This is, this is obviously a service and a component of policing in Yarmouth that we've had a lot of interest in. And I'm, and I'm excited to hear this presentation. Can you give me a sense, just for some of the folks that are watching, what's a typical call? Give me, give me a sense of, of a call.
There is no typical call. That's the answer.
Thank you.
No, I, I would agree, but I think for some people.
Infinity variety.
A typical mental health call?
Yeah.
I mean, they can definitely vary from, from somebody who just wants to talk and needs support to somebody who's in full-blown crisis.
I was going to say, it's, it's very difficult to say what is a typical call. But I think something more important to focus on is that, yes, while it's called a, a mental health team, the reality is when police get called, usually there is some component of trauma or concern for that person. That's why you call the police. And people respond to that differently. So if, if we can just help support that person in that time of need, maybe decrease some of those symptoms of anxiety, stress, feeling overwhelmed in our community, that's our focus. Can that range from someone with a very severe mental health diagnosis to someone that, you know, is maybe your neighbor that you would never second-guess? Absolutely. We've probably been, for everyone here and watching, we've probably visited people even on your roads. And that's, that's very common, and we're very grateful to.
Yeah, is part of the training also creating an awareness with the other officers as to what, what may be more appropriately handled by this capability? Is that?
Absolutely, yeah. And it's just further training on, you know, how can we best help this person in this time of need? What is the best avenue to solve this problem for them and then help them move forward?
No, I think it's.
And part of, and part of the grant is also, we, we use part of the grant to also train officers in community crisis intervention. So even officers that are not on our team, we started off, you know, in the beginning, when we started the team, we started off with a goal of training 25% of our officers in community crisis intervention, and we're up to 50% now. So even when somebody from the team isn't available to go to a call or when there isn't a clinician working, we have trained officers who have that higher level of training and knowing how to interact appropriately, or more appropriately, with people in mental health crisis.
That's terrific. You know, one of the things that Yarmouth Police Department is very, very good at, one of the many things, is in social media and creating awareness of the programs and services. How are we, how are we handling that, particularly with this kind of, this kind of approach to policing? How do you, how do you handle that? Is there a Facebook page or a coffee with the chief? Or how do we create an awareness?
A few months back, we did do a social media post where we introduced our clinicians, and we put out the information. It was there. We're working on updating our Facebook page. Sergeant Wells has worked on a great page, landing page for our mental health team so that their contact information will be there. We're just waiting to get that up. But we have, we've advertised that our staff is out there and, and that they're available.
Yeah, no, that's great. You know, in, in, over the years, in my, you know, one of the reasons why I've been so supportive of this is because just in my direct dealings with various police officers and being at YPD, when, when I, the question I used to ask is, what's the, what's the, what's the trend that's most concerning? And this is the topic that used to come up all the time, the number of calls and cases that you could characterize as sort of fitting within the service area. And I think it's terrific that the department has been able to take an area of need, identify it, identify an appropriate response, and then work with the community to make sure that the resources are there. And it's terrific that now the grant funding has come in and has become available. I think that's one of the, that's, that's one of the things that I think is important to note about the department, is that oftentimes, when you're taking the initiative and taking the lead, sometimes there are funding opportunities that can emerge, that can, that can pop up. I would assume the 188-s somewhat thousand, I took some notes here, that funding is state funding, right? $180,000 that you mentioned, that's state funding. It would appear, and tell me if I'm wrong, tell me if I'm wrong, but it would appear that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, this is certainly the impression that I get, is that, that the state is making this area a priority in trying to find ways to make available resources that can be tapped into on an ongoing basis. Is that a fair, is that a fair observation? Yeah.
The deputy, as stated earlier, the deputy started the program in 2015, and it was a small fledgling program there through the, his efforts and the efforts of our team, and be able to maintain those relationships with the staff at, at the state level is what has allowed our program to grow to where it is today, to where they got invited to go to Fitchburg to present to an entire conference on what Yarmouth has been doing and this, and the successes that we've had. And then his relationships, again, to keep our funding going, where we are really at the forefront of what's going on in the Commonwealth when it comes to this.
Yeah, that's terrific. Well, thank you, Chief, and thank you both for the work that you're doing. It's, it's something that's exciting. And again, we're very proud of it. We're very proud of the work that you're doing. So thank you. And thank you for being here for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. We'll go to Selectman Horgan.
Thanks for being with us tonight. Actually, a couple of questions I had, you've answered. Hearing your presentation, I was curious, are you able to track at all the calls? Are there repeat calls from the same people? Are you, are you being able to track that at all?
Yes, we are. I'm just a separate data sheet. We do have some repeat people that we check in on regularly, and sometimes I meet someone and we don't hear from them for a year. So it just really varies.
I was also curious, I know our Cape Hospital Psych Center is not really functioning very well. If it's even, is it staffed now?
Mm-hmm.
It is.
It is.
Because the last time I was in there, they were just putting people in the emergency room. I guess my question to you is, if you're able to, if you're, somebody's in a crisis situation, you're able to get them to the hospital, are you finding that they're recycling back into the community time and time again? Or are the resources out there addressing some of the more significant needs?
I would say we see, again, kind of a variety of response from the hospital. What I always like to remind people, though, is within our community, you know, this is where people live, this is where their family is, this is where they work. So despite going into a hospital to get assistance, this is where they return. So are there supports that are available? Absolutely. Sometimes it takes people a few times before they accept those supports, but we're more than happy to keep going through that cycle, supporting them through it, and hoping we make that change.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, from the '21 to '22, I also thought, do you think COVID played a role in that at all? Were people more, struggling more during the COVID time in a mental health frame of reference?
I would say during COVID, all of our data was a little skewed. And I can't personally speak to it. I, I came onto the department in the beginning of 2022, where we were able to obtain more funding, increase our clinician hours, so.
We, we did definitely see a disconnect with the community. We did definitely see a disconnect with the community and their providers during COVID, just, you know, because obviously they had to stay indoors. But, so there was a significant increase in calls, but, yeah.
Just as a final comment, we're obviously very, very pleased to be going in this direction. Everybody, I think, recognizes the need to deal with mental health, especially from a policing point of view. What I'm really thrilled about is to hear so many of the other officers jumping on board. That's great. You know, it'd be great if it was 100% participation, but, you know, having people go to the door with some semblance of how to handle a mental health issue as opposed to a policing issue is really remarkable. And to reach this level of participation is really a testament to all of the leadership, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. We'll go to Selectman McGurran.
Thank you for your presentation. This, to me, I feel is vitally important to have this component there in the community. And certainly, our police department is not properly equipped, nor should they be, to handle these mental health situations. They need the additional expertise of people like you, Justine. And I'm so glad to see it, and I know that you're making a big difference in the community. My concern is, what do we do to be sure that the funding doesn't dry up and we keep the program going in the future? And is there anything we can do to help you with that? And that's more for the Chief.
Our initial presentation, like I said, just a little under a year ago, is when we brought this forward. And at that point, we made a presentation, we were assured that if the state funding went away, that we would support a full-time position. Based on the success of our police department, solely because of the work of the individuals that are on the mental health unit on a day-and-dial basis, I don't see, unless there is a catastrophic shift in the state, I don't see Yarmouth PD losing the funding that we have because our program has been so successful. And it's also in part because of the data that Justine and Patrick are pulling on a regular basis so we can justify the work that we're doing. We're not pulling numbers out of thin air. They're actually cataloging everything that they're doing so that when it does come for the grant component, we can say, this is how many calls, this is how many people we've serviced, this is how many follow-ups we've done. And to Justine's point about the correlation of, you know, one number affecting another, we're fairly confident that we can say that the hard work that they're doing is reducing some of the calls, which is our main goal, you know, to make sure that people are getting the services that they need and that we can reduce some of the mental health calls that we have in town. But because of their hard work, I'm very confident that we're going to keep moving forward in only bigger and better things. And, Dan, to your point about training, the grant, our goal is to get more officers trained. It really just comes down to a matter of getting people off the road and getting them to the training when it's available. But we haven't sent anybody up there kicking and screaming. People want to go because they want to be better qualified to deal with this because these calls are a continual, this is a continual thing. I read the log every day, and the amount of mental health calls that we're going through is only increasing. And Justine made a presentation at the Yarmouth Rotary the other day. She was one of my guests, she was my guest speaker, and I made the comment that she's one of those popular people in the building when she's working along with Patrick. Because when a mental health call comes in, we want an expert to go with us. We can take the call so far. Justine and Patrick step in and they take it to the finish line. And then they're able to provide those vital follow-up services. Because our officers go to that call, they go to the next one. The next one's a domestic, a car accident, something like that. Justine and Patrick can then take the time after that to reach back out and talk to that person and give them or the family the services that they need. That's why this is such a home run for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dorcas. I'm Peter.
When I voted for this a year ago, I was hoping the outcome would be what you've described tonight. I'm very proud of what's happened. You know, I also think that you as civilians going out there, dealing with someone who's afraid of the police, the cops, if you will, you can de-escalate the situation, but if it's not de-escalated, there is an officer there to protect everybody. And Dorcas brought up the funding question, and I think, hopefully, we can keep the funding going because, you know, the numbers that you've described and what you've done is, again, where we want to go. And I think it helps everybody in the community, and I think it makes the police job, not easier, because you got, the job is real tough, and your job is tough, too. But I think working together, it makes it better for everybody and safer for everybody. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
I am pretty much in concurrence with all of the comments of my colleagues. The thing I'd like to say is policing has changed because society has changed over the years. The problems that police are confronted with remind me of problems in the schools. Back in the day, teachers would go in, they'd teach a class, and that'd be all there is to it. Today, they're interfacing with social workers, school psychologists. They're dealing with homelessness. They're dealing with substance abuse in the homes. They're dealing with physical abuse in the homes, and all of these other issues, whether nutritional issues. All of, at the same time, they're trying to teach a class. And it's the same with, you know, back in the day, police just dealt with criminal type of behavior. They came in to address it. Now, a lot of these calls that are coming in, it's people that need services, basically, or people that just don't know where else to turn. Some people with mental health problems are violent. And so obviously, you need the police component to protect the social workers that are trying to reach these people. So it's an infinitely complicated world that police have to navigate in and that teachers have to navigate in. And the approach of bringing the mental health component along with the police component, it makes an abundance of sense. In fact, it's, in my opinion, essential that we do it this way. So I'm proud of the work that you ladies have done and the department has done. And like my colleagues, I hope that we can continue to get funding because this is the future of policing. I have no question, no doubt in my mind about that, that it's asking too much of officers to go it the way they did before we had all these social issues that police had to deal with. And so I congratulate you for your dedication, your work, your compassion, and your service to the people that are in need. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to present, and if the board pleases, we could send out updates, you know, quarterly or every six months on the work that the team's doing to keep you up to date. Thank you.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is a discussion/vote municipal vulnerability preparedness MVP plan update.
In the meantime, I'd just like to say I congratulate our youngest audience member here today. He was fantastic, so well-behaved. Thank you very much.
All right. Good evening. Amanda Lima, your Town Engineer, I'm here tonight, as it was introduced, for what we call being an MVP, the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Community, which is what Yarmouth is. We have seeked out a grant, and over the last year, we've been working with all town staff, whether it be the libraries to DPW, water facilities. We've also had some public outreach. We've met at the senior center during the day. We've met in the evening in this room. We've had a lot of good feedback. We've been working with Woods Hole Group here, and Brittany will be giving the technical details of the report that's been drafted and will be finalized over the next month. And the end of the fiscal year wrapped up this grant as well. And she'll be going over some next steps and suggestions. So I'll pass it over to Brittany.
Thanks, Amanda. I'm Brittany Hoffnagle with Woods Hole Group, Climate Resiliency Specialist. And, yeah, I guess it all started about a year ago. Amanda and Woods Hole Group worked together to submit a grant application to complete a vulnerability assessment for climate change and adaptation planning. So quickly, just going to give a quick introduction to the project, go over the technical framework, share some of the results, and briefly discuss the next steps. So just a little background, this all started with the Community Resilience Building Workshop that some of you may have attended, or other town staff may have attended. In June of 2019, the community came together to assess coastal hazards and develop action items for how Yarmouth could actively increase resiliency to sealarize coastal storm surge and other climate change factors. So out of that workshop, one of the top actions was creating a vulnerability assessment adaptation plan, which last year was awarded to us. So we're actually able to do a more detailed plan to address sealarize and coastal storm surge. So I just want to emphasize that this was a collaborative approach amongst many of the town facilities and departments, as Amanda said, water, DPW, fire departments, police stations, libraries, many of the other departments. We all worked together to assess all of the town-owned and managed facilities. And through that working together in a collaborative approach, we utilized a vulnerability risk assessment framework, which is summarized in three phases. Phase one being understanding the climate change data, so really understanding the sealarize and storm surge projections, and then gathering that asset data. So we were looking at town-owned buildings, assets like pump stations, generators, things like that, and gathering their critical elevation. So what elevation of that building asset or facility would cause that structure to fail if it would become flooded with water? Phase two was then to work with town staff to identify the inundation consequence score. So what value does those assets provide, or what service does that asset provide to the town? And what the consequence would be if that asset would become flooded? We then mapped the inundation probability using some climate change data and then are able to calculate risk by multiplying those values together. Phase three, then creating a prioritized high-risk asset list so that those top-ranking items can go through adaptation planning. So that was just a quick overview of the process. I'm going to go through a little bit more technical detail. So I mentioned, we have to first understand the climate change data. So I do have a link to the source of some of this data, but Woods Hole Group was lucky enough to work with the state to develop the standard planning tool for climate change, particularly for sealarize and coastal storm surge. And that is this sophisticated hydrodynamic storm surge and sealarize model called the Massachusetts Coast Flood Risk Model. It is now the state standard. And this is a visualization of that data. This is present day, ranges from color, from 0.1% storm, which is something like a storm like Sandy, it's a thousand-year-return occurrence storm, up down to the 100%, which is what you might see every year. So this map kind of describes your annual chance of flooding. So every given year, what is your probability of flooding when a storm comes through? And so this is what the state is using to help coastal communities plan for climate change in the future. And I'm going to show you some maps for 2030, 2050, and 2070. And just remember, these are projections, and the state developed these as guidelines for a high-sealarize scenario so that we could plan in a worst-case scenario. So we just want to make sure that we're doing the best we can to evaluate our concerns as a worst-case scenario. So as climate change does change, or how conditions change in the future, we can reassess and readjust our projections in the future. But this is used as a guidance and for planning in the future. So once we understand the climate change data, we did then assess all of the municipal town-owned buildings. And so we were inventorying buildings, generators, roadways, outbuildings, bathhouses, and others. And we were able to communicate with a variety of departments to get more detailed information on all of these surveyed assets. Once we developed that inventory of assets that we were going to assess, we were able to do, go through the criticality framework to score each asset. And we were able to score each asset in a variety of categories, whether it's area of service loss, meaning, does it affect just the property if that asset fails? Or does the failure of an asset affect the whole town? We can also assess on cost of damage and impact on the economy. And so assessing each asset using this criticality framework, we can then get a consequence score, which gives us an idea of the value of those assets and the services they provide. And so you can see, this is just a subset of some of the assets we assessed based on the criticality scoring. And you can see how the scores, the final scores in this last column vary based on the importance to each of those categories. We then can assess the vulnerability. So once we have the criticality score, we can use the MCFRM, those pretty rainbowed maps, to assess the probability of each of those assets flooding using that sealarize and climate change data. When you multiply these two values together, we then get the total risk score. So the result of this project is a listing of the total risk scores for each of these assets. And we have these values for 2030, 2050, and the 2070 time horizon. So the results of this project, if we consider everything, Packet Landing Marina, by probably not any surprise, was ranked pretty high. My understanding is Packet Landing is important for commercial recreational uses, but also serves as a storage and launch point for emergency boats, for the fire department and DNR. All of the other coastal infrastructure was also high-ranking in our results. And so I think to us in the town, it made sense that a lot of these infrastructures are vulnerable because they are water-dependent. So if you do exclude those from the list, you can see some of the buildings and structures that ranked high as well. So we have some of the sailing center and the bathhouses also along our coast. And so I think the key takeaway is to highlight here is that the highest at-risk assets here included, include those water-dependent and coastal infrastructure. But I think the bigger key takeaway is, in the near term, municipal buildings that provide town services are relatively safe. The town could pursue some flexible, long-term resiliency strategies if desired. But I think I really want to emphasize here that through our assessment, town services, like the fire department buildings, the DPW, Town Hall, the visitor center, and all those other critical town services that likely would be utilized during a storm event, are pretty well-protected, and we should all be really happy that those services can be maintained in the event of a storm and future conditions. So that brings us to some of the adaptation and resiliency strategies. And when Woods Hole Group does our work, we often talk about strategies in four themes, which could be avoid, is to just not have vulnerable assets in the vulnerable zone. So think about strategic planning and just knowing not to build in vulnerable locations. Accommodate and protect are the ideas of maintaining a service or a building in that location, but be able to either elevate a building or protect it by installing some type of landscape feature, whether it's beach, doo nourishment project, and/or maybe more hard infrastructure. And then less, retreat is also, a phased retreat plan is also an option that you can consider for adaptation. So I just wanted to quickly go over some of the most high-ranking areas. As I mentioned, Bass River Beach, which also, I think, was brought to my attention, that it's more known as Smuggler's Beach, was a building, an area that was ranked relatively high in the list. This one is more vulnerable to those storm conditions. And so these blue colors are the mean-high water, so what our daily flooding conditions might be in present day through 2070. There's a little bit of vulnerability coming up the ramp, as we would expect. There's a little bit of vulnerability coming up the ramp, as we would expect, but by 2070, you might see a flood pathway through the beach. But the concern really here is those storm conditions. As you see, this light green color is that 1% storm occurrence in 2030. So definitely an area vulnerable to coastal storm surge. Our next area was the Englewood Beach and Sailing Center. This is an area, excuse me, that had multiple vulnerabilities. You can see mean-high water can have a flood pathway through the slow spot. This is that white house that is kind of Yarmouth's flagship property for king tide flooding, and entryways through the beach, but also an area vulnerable to storm surge. The last spot I want to highlight is Packet Landing Marina. This one was a concern because of the implications of sunny day flooding or tidal day flooding. We all know from existing conditions that this dock currently floods on a king tide sometimes. And so because of the importance of this location, there was some interest in understanding how to better adapt this location. As one of our public workshop meetings, we did open up, we did provide some photos of what some adaptations at Packet Landing might look like. These aren't finalized, these weren't voted on, these were just some preliminary concept drawings, but this one is just showing what the existing conditions are. We have this parking lot with a dock and floating dock system. So an option would be to install a flood wall with some max elevation at 13 feet, NAVDD8. Doing a flood wall around the vicinity would help protect against that 1% occurrence storm event by 2050, and also rebuild and adjust the height to prevent nuisance flooding. So having a flood wall against the parking lot, and then elevating the system to kind of get some of that protection during those nuisance flooding events. So that was one option. Another option is to consider elevating the entire parking lot and dock system, and that would rebuild and adjust the height to prevent nuisance flooding with that bulkhead. That was just a look at a preliminary adaptation concept. So again, none of these have been approved, voted on, or taken any further, but just some ideas for building resilience. So some of our next steps, we are currently working on edits of the draft report. So we're working with the town staff to make those edits and review, and hopefully those will be done by the end of July. And I'll leave it at that, if anyone has any questions. We are actually, with Packet Landing, we did move forward with submitting a coastal zone management coastal resilience grant to do a proposed alternatives analysis for Packet Landing Marina, which that process will do a more detailed assessment of Packet Landing Marina, and developed, develop up to 30% designs for how Packet Landing Marina might look like in the future, to reduce that vulnerability to coastal flooding and storm surge.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll go to the board for questions or comments. Mark?
Thank you. I'm glad we're having this conversation. One of the questions that I have, and it's probably more directed to the town administrator and maybe the assistant, is that in terms of developing this information and these recommendations, where do we see this information being utilized principally? Would it be with the capital committee? Would it be with, where do we, how do we want to utilize this information in terms of decision-making?
Well, I want to have Bill talk about some of the capital points, but there's a couple of critical elements that went into our decision to first pursue this grant funding to update the whole vulnerability planning effort. You know, first of all, you know, we are threatened along the coastal area with a wide range of coastal infrastructure problems. And if you recall, we initially had this conversation together, you know, with the Board of Selectmen, in terms of the board looking for ways to, I think, more systematically approach some of our coastal infrastructure needs. If you recall, the first capital, iteration of the capital program that I was presented had a coastal infrastructure item, I think it was like $15 million, just for general principle of all of the problems that we may face. It became a very difficult situation to manage. In fact, you know, I asked Carl von Hohn about it, and he was very frustrated that he had put in that $15 million every year for the last, you know, five or six years, and it was just carried over into future years. And what our feeling was, that there is significantly more funding available at the Commonwealth level for managing some of the issues associated with the coastal infrastructure, how we handle sea level rise. And what folks were looking for at the state level is a more methodical approach to doing the initial planning, and then working to identify critical priority projects, and then to use that development to be eligible to seek additional state funds in order to prepare to meet these challenges. So I think one of our key goals was to help inventory what specific issues, concerns, plans that we have, try to develop projects that would match with what state resources that were available, and gear our efforts, rather than just have to try to carry, you know, a huge item that took 100% town funding, is that we would be able to compete more effectively at the statewide level for all of the infrastructure resources that might be available. And I think that the analysis of potential options and scenarios for the Packet Landing Marina is a perfect example of that mindset, on how do we first inventory all of our concerns, how do we inventory projects, develop alternatives analyses, and move them forward, and try to get the state funding, so that the town is not just saddled with the overburdened, you know, sense of doom. And I think with that, Bill can talk about maybe some of the specific items in capital that...
Well, what this does is provide work, vulnerability context, where the CIP had a list of seawalls and other work. There wasn't the context associated with, well, what is a priority in terms of vulnerability? So when you prioritize it that way, you get access, as Bob said, the town administrator said, to funding. There's going to be work that we need to do that is not part of that sort of vulnerability context. So in a true capital plan, you want to prioritize everything, and prioritize it within the context of where's the funding. And that's what this does for that list that we've always had in there. So that, I mean, there is valid things in that list, but now we understand what part of the list could get a funding source that we can move ahead with, and you're mixing town money and the vulnerability money to sort of go down that list. So without the vulnerability context, you're really not targeting what's a priority. You're basically saying, this is worn out, this is worn out, this is worn out. Now you're basically saying, well, if we do this type of work under capital, then we won't face this condition in the future. So it's beyond, you know, in capital, taking a look at what has to be repaired, and also looking at the future of preventing hazards or mitigating hazards before they're happening. So that's the important thing against, you know, the MVP, is we're getting access to money, but also characterizing work along the water as it relates to vulnerability, along with the work that has to happen, that's just standard repairs and seawalls and things like that.
Thank you, yeah. So these become recommendations that get discussed with the capital committee, and helping shape some of our, because we do have a backlog of coastal projects that we really haven't taken much action on. We've been sort of picking them off, you know, when there's a priority. I do believe, Mr. Chairman, that as a board, it makes a great deal of sense to prioritize those impacted by sea level rise and climate change. I think that's an important variable in consideration. And I don't believe the projects, or at least what appear to be projects emerging from this study, have shown up in any of our prior coastal projects. So I think in that sense, adding to the inventory of coastal improvements that we need to be keeping in mind, I think is important. And obviously, having a plan that makes us eligible for funding is also very important. But I do think that it speaks to the need to revisit the whole capital, coastal capital planning process, the coastal capital projects that we've talked about, really taking a look at. We've had this conversation several times, but we need to bring it to a whole new level. I'm supportive of this. I think the more we can identify areas where we need to make improvements, I think it's critical. Now, another question that I have deals with, deals with some of the recommendations, because I, what jumped out at me is the number of municipal buildings that we have that are vulnerable. And I'm just curious if you can comment on a couple of them. I noticed that the DPW building, which we just built, is in a vulnerable area. Am I reading that correctly?
Was that from a slide?
Yeah. I thought I saw that up at one of the, in the criticality scoring. I thought I saw DPW building in the critical infrastructure. I saw our DPW building way up there, it was like third on the list, along with the water department building. So is it safe to say that those buildings are in areas of real vulnerability, where we may need to be cognizant of potential improvements to protect them? Is that how I should read that?
If you're referring to this table, where the DPW and the water control facility buildings are on the top of the list, this table specifically was referring to the criticality score. So this is based on those categories of, you know, if the corrosion control facility number one failed because it got flooded, it would cause service to the, it would lose service to the entire town. So this table was really just characterizing that value of the asset and those town services they provide.
But it's not suggesting that it's particularly vulnerable?
No, this is just basically a ranked list of the value, for lack of a better term, of how critical these facilities are.
Okay, so the vulnerability list, I guess I should really zero in on. Those of that, and that list, so those are the, those are the facilities that we really need to be cognizant of.
Yep, and I think that the point I was trying to make here is that a lot of these are those water-dependent facilities, and that Yarmouth is really unique for a lot of the work that I've done, that Yarmouth is really unique, that a lot of your town services are pretty well protected. The full ranking of all of the...
Repeat that again, you're saying that we're in reasonably good shape. Many of our facilities are...
For like town services, whether it's water, fire, emergency, things like those type of services, are pretty well protected. They're located a little bit further inland, and not right along the waterfront. A lot of the vulnerability for Yarmouth are those coastal infrastructure, the bathhouses, the docks, which makes sense, because they're located along the shoreline.
So we don't have to relocate Town Hall right now?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Although, I have to make a comment, that it looks like on the list, that if the Town Hall were to flood, it's no big deal, like it just washes away. I don't know how that makes...
The biggest threat to Town Hall is the sprinkler system.
Yeah, exactly.
I've worked with many other towns that have had pump stations right along the shoreline, you know, sewage system right along, you know, in Falmouth, there's the Trunk River area. I've worked with towns that have much more critical infrastructure along the coastline. So I think that's the one good news here, is that a lot of your critical services are pretty, are pretty well-protected. There are some, if there is growing concern as changes happen in the future, there's building-specific techniques that you can employ if you really needed to, you know, elevate mechanicals out of the basement, you know, deploy barriers if you needed to. Some of those more long-term strategies could start helping if conditions change.
So the next step would be to develop recommendations on those infrastructure facilities that are the most vulnerable to identify strategies, potential cost estimates, things that we might want to keep in mind for down the road with respect to some of these? So that would be kind of the next step in this overall exercise, do you think?
So, yeah, so some of those recommendations are going to be in the final report, and we will be, where we can, maybe developing some preliminary limited cost amounts. There's always, the next step of any of this project could be doing more building-specific or neighborhood-specific vulnerability assessments to narrow down those specific costs. You know, we can do our best with the deadline of this project to kind of do some of those preliminary costings, but would be limited.
Well, I think one of the, I don't mean to dominate the conversation here, Mr. Chairman, but one of the, one of the projects that I'm particularly interested in is, among many, is we're building at the drive-in site, for example. That's in a very vulnerable area. I think as a selectman, I'd like to know if there are other measures that we should be considering while we're, as we go into a construction phase. I think, again, this kind of, what I want to be able to do is to take the recommendations and adopt them or act on them relatively quickly, and make sure that some of the, some of the potential projects we can, we can work on, particularly while we're in the midst of thinking about construction, like the drive-in site. I see that's referenced in the vulnerability scoring. And so my question for you is, are there things that we should be thinking about doing that make that site less vulnerable to potentially flooding or storm damage, or are we not yet ready to make any recommendations?
I think for that particular site, we were referencing the upweller that houses the shellfish aquaculture. And so I think that vulnerability there was really flooding, the potential electricity for the maintaining of that facility. And so there's always options to elevate those utilities, move the upweller inland if you can. I think there's a variety of options you could employ. I'm not sure that there's a study warranted for redoing that entire vulnerability of that location, but there...
And I think as part of that project, they're getting a new electric service, and I know Kathy's taken in many considerations for flood elevations, so, but definitely, she's been part of the communications as part of the plan on the steering committee.
So are there steps that we are going to be taking at the drive-in site to maybe deal with our vulnerability there? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, that's great. How about, so Town Hall is not, we can survive with the current risks at Town Hall. The fire station, I know, gets mentioned a lot as being in a particularly prone area. And I'm noticing now the two fire stations. What are some of the things that we might need to be doing with those facilities? Do we know?
So the, the fire station on Old Main, I think, is the more vulnerable of the two. They might not be vulnerable until the 2050 or 2070 time horizon, based on our data. The site at Old Main concerns me because the comms system is in the basement, so, and I know that that building already, according to the contact that I talked to there, that the building already gets flooded, whether it's water coming down through cracks from rain events. So I think my biggest concern there was that elevating the comms out of the basement and elevating utilities.
So that's something that will be in the report?
Yeah.
That's terrific. What about the libraries? There's been some concern that the libraries themselves are in a particularly risky area.
I might have to go back and look at the data for that one, but I think for specific buildings, I know that, again, some of their electrical equipment and important infrastructure were in the basements. And so, again, that preliminary recommendation of elevating and removing things out of the basement. And if necessary, you could deploy flood barriers. If a storm is coming, you could have an action plan to deploy barriers if necessary. But, yeah, I'll leave it at that.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much for doing the study. I look forward to the final report and some of the other recommendations. And I think as a board, I'm going to be very interested in taking, obviously, your recommendations, your suggestions, and making sure we move on many of them, particularly the most critical ones. So thank you.
Dan?
Thank you for the presentation. Actually, if anything, I'm relieved that the critical town services do not anticipate being impacted. And that was a major concern, I think we all had. I'm curious, Bob, does this work inform the town's insurance coverage in terms of, do we need to, if you, I don't know how insurance is done in the town, but whether or not this information, will that help to inform overall coverages?
No, not at this point, that if there are facilities located in the... No, not at this point, that if there are facilities located in the flood zone, those are obviously considerations. But what we're talking about here is the application of a, of a model that goes beyond the present flood zone. And it estimates in 2030, where's the flood zone going to be? Fifty, seventy, where's the flood zone going to be? So I, I think it presents more of, of an analysis of things that if sea level rise continues at the present rate, where are we going to be in 50 years? And at that point, insurance is probably going to be very expensive for some of these areas, but they're not allowed to charge us for that now.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Dorcas?
Thank you very much for the presentation. It's, as we all say, a relief to know that our town buildings are not that vulnerable. And I just leave it at that. Thank you.
Brittany, I have some questions that are a little bit, little bit, little bit different on this thing. I do know that the Gulf of Maine is warming faster than any, any other ocean body in the, in the world, and hot water takes up more space than cold water. I also know that some of our, some of our residents don't believe in global warming. However, even if you don't believe in global warming, I give you September 21st, 1938, October of 1944, August of 54. Those are, those are three hurricanes that hit here. In both cases, the Old Main Street Fire Station was flooded in all three of those cases. Four Corners at Bridge Street was flooded, Old Main Street and Bridge Street was flooded. I was here for the 54 hurricane. It's one of my first, first memories. Bass River has not been sufficiently dredged in several years, so it's flattening out. So if there's going to be flooding, it's going to be, there's less room for the water to go and to flood into the river and flood out of the river. Flood maps, FEMA flood maps are going to be updated and continually updated, and that doesn't really affect the town. That affects individual homeowners who should be looking very closely at, at do I need to have flood insurance? And if you don't have it, you may want to talk about it. And if you don't have flood insurance and you're not in an A or a V zone, flood insurance is actually quite reasonable in price. We are going to be having a fair amount of infrastructure along the coastline, and I give you the sewer lines, they're going to run along Route 28. And if Parker River Bridge gets blown out, that's going to blow out a major, a major infrastructure for the, for us. So it's, it's, it's going to be interesting to see what's going to happen, but I, you know, I also think that individuals should look to, look at themselves. I'm a former banker, I've done a lot of construction loans, and a lot of the, a lot of the new residential construction that I've done and commercial construction that they've done, all the mechanical systems are on the second or third floor or on the, on the roof, just to, just to keep, keep them out. So your presentation is phenomenal. I think it's very good and very timely, and if we can get some estimates and stuff to take care of it. Smugglers Beach, what I know as Failance Beach, it used to be fully, fully wooded, and all those trees were taken out in the 38 hurricane. Where the, where the windmill is, that was under probably five or six feet of water during, during both 38 and, and the 44 hurricane. So even if you don't believe in global warming, if we do have a big storm, there's going to be a lot of water and a lot of flooding. And again, thank you very much. It's very well done, and, and I think our Capitol folks are going to be looking, looking at some of this stuff to see if we can protect some of these properties. Again, thank you.
Thank you. My comments pretty much would line up with Mark Forrest. I think that to look at these areas that are of more critical concern is, is something that I'd be interested in and to receive your final recommendations on what, if any, precautions or improvements the town can make to decrease their exposure. I'd be very interested in that as well. I'm glad you made the distinction between assets that are of critical importance to the town versus the vulnerability of those assets, because there's obviously apples and oranges. And I think there's a little bit of confusion at the beginning of this discussion on those two, on those two items. I would hope that on Buck Island Road, our sewage treatment plant would be relatively safe, because that's where that's going. I'd like to see some analysis on that. And any of the pumping stations, if there's going to be any of on Route 28, I'd be interested in getting some feedback on that. One of the, one of the questions I had is Bray Farm. What's the, what's the exposure of the marshland up there getting flooded out? I mean, it seems to me that, that property wouldn't be particularly vulnerable. Why, why is the Bray Farm property considered one of the-
Mr. Chairman, you can, you can go up into the marsh, and at, and at high tide, the Bray Farm barn is probably four feet above mean high water.
Wow.
So if you, if you get a storm surge in there of five, six, seven feet, that's going to be underwater.
Really?
Yes. Yeah, you can, you can go up there, not during greenhead season, but go up there in a little raft, and you go right by Bray Farm and continue on probably another five or six hundred yards past that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it does, it does back up on a salt marsh, and so any, any current or storm surge that comes through there, it's going to impact that low line area.
In terms of municipal buildings, is the only one that really has a serious level of concern, the fire station on Old Main Street and the, perhaps the library there too?
I believe so. So other than the bathhouses at the beaches, I think that those facilities were the more concerned.
I meant when I said, I mean, like operational town facilities, like police departments, town halls, fire departments, DPW-
Right. So yeah, I think, yeah, fire on Old Main is probably the most concerning.
Because that, as Mark said, that always comes up as kind of a place that's not really in the right location, or not as safe as the station on Buck Island Road or the one up on, on 6A. Okay, well, a lot of very interesting information and clearly presented and well organized, and we're very grateful to you for that. And thank you, ladies. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Next item is wastewater slash wastewater updates drought and water wellness.
There you go.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Lori's handing out some of the presentation materials. We also had a detailed map in that pack of information for you that shows the well locations. We did realize that in past presentations, a lot of times we'll throw around some well numbers, and because the town has such a large number, it might be good to have a visual of what that looks like.
That's great. This is very, this is very, very useful.
I'm going to ask if it's possible at the next meeting, because I know this is easy to do, to have a copy of the zones of contribution for each of the water supply wells, so that the board members can see the vast land area in Yarmouth that contributes to the quality of the, the water supplies.
So have it, could it be, would it be possible to have it like color-coded?
Yep, right on top of this.
To show which, which one's in the Bass River watershed, which one's in the Lewis Bay watershed, which one's in Parker's River?
That's possible, but I think what Selectmen Forrest is looking for, the zones of contribution, the circles around the wells.
You're talking about the wells, not the-
That is a pretty impressive diagram. That shows that essentially two-thirds of the town is contributing to what the wells are drawing up. So that is a great diagram. We'll provide that next time, absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand now. Thank you.
Just to start the introductions, I'm Jeff Colby, the Public Works Director, joined here by Lori Rosala, the Water and Wastewater Superintendent. And we really appreciate that you're taking the time for this Water and Wastewater update. I think it's very timely. We're right in the middle of our high-use period here, the July 4th week, and also most of July are very high water usage periods, and we'll show you some data in that regard. But if you could have the next slide. I do want to show you what we'll cover as far as an overview for tonight. There is a lot of information, but I think many, much of it you've seen already, but this is more of a current status update for, for you. We're going to talk about the drought status, again, a very important topic, given that we're right in the middle of the summer high-usage water period. I will talk about the water conservation policy. We spent a lot of time last year talking about that. There really hasn't been too many updates to that, but it is a working document that will be updated as needed, but we'll show that again. Construction project update, there's a lot of going on with regards to the Water Division and their activities. Wells number four and five primarily relates to the PFOS treatment. That'll be coming online shortly. We have an update for that. Well, number nine is a very large supplier of water that will be coming online very shortly. We've got an update for you on that. Phase two and three is the well redevelopment, reconstruction projects. That's a very, very important project for the division and to preserve the buildings that are out there. We'll have a couple of pictures and some graphics for you on that. And then we'll transition into a wastewater update as we start to head into the construction season for Contracts Two and Three. But we also want to update you on the treatment facility, which we refer to as Contract One. So we'll talk about that at kind of the end of the update. But with that, I'd like to turn it over to Lori, so she could walk you through the water components of this update.
Thank you. So this is the current drought status map in Massachusetts. It's a pretty boring map, because there's no droughts right now. But I think this time last year, it was mostly orange, the state, and right now, we are not in a drought, we're at normal level, so that, that's a good start, but that could definitely change at any time. We've had a lot of rain, we might go into a dry cycle, you never know. I just wanted to show, this is the USGS monitoring well. It's actually in Barnstable, kind of near Yarmouth Port. And this just shows the water level at that well since 1963. So right now, we're at that orange dot at the end, you know, we're kind of in the middle of the pack. We're not in really bad shape, we're not as good as we were in those three high peaks before the end, or 2018, 2019, 2020.
Just a quick question, Lori. Where exactly is this monitoring well?
It's in Barnstable-
Barnstable Village?
Near Comiquid area.
Near the Comiquid area?
Yeah.
Okay, somewhere near 6A?
Yes.
Just trying to get a sense of where-
Yeah. I'm not, I, it's up in that corner of Barnstable, but exactly where it is, I'm not sure. It's the closest one to Yarmouth, USGS monitoring well. So this just kind of shows, you see every year in the summer, we drop off pretty fast. So right at the, at the moment, we're on our way down for groundwater levels. So just keeping that in mind as we go forward, want to make sure we protect our supplies. But to date, this is similar to a chart you would have seen in the past. That red line is our capacity of all our wells with four, five, and 10, the three PFOS wells, and off, and well nine off. That's a 10.21 MGD is our capacity. This year, that's, the blue line is our maximum days. We've been fine. It's been raining so much that people, I guess, have actually not used their irrigation system, which is really good, and we have not, the system hasn't been stressed yet. That being said, that could change any moment with, with the weather. So we do want to keep in mind that we do have water conservation measures, voluntary measures in place, even under normal conditions. We ask people to do a voluntary odd-even watering, always before nine and after five. And then we go into our higher levels if needed, based on our capacity, the pumping that we're seeing, and the state drought task force level of drought. So should be familiar with that. But one thing that came up in April is that we received a new Water Management Act, that's what WMA is, Water Management Act Registration Statement, which is from Mass DEP, and it tells us how much water we're allowed to pump in a year. In the past, it never had any conservation restrictions for nonessential water use as part of it, but the newest permit that we received does have these restrictions on nonessential water use that we are mandated to put into effect if the state drought management task force declares any kind of drought in Massachusetts. The thing that's key about these is that they're a little bit more strict than what we have in our current water conservation policy, in particular, Level One, mild drought. We have, right now, a two-day-per-week watering. This is going to require that we change that to one day per week. That's the primary difference. Those are the actual regulations in the permit written there. For the most part, everything else kind of agrees with what we already have. So we, we have two years to comply, so you'll be hearing again from us with a revised water conservation policy that you guys implement, you approve last spring. So we'll have to revise that and get you a draft to review that matches what the state is requiring. So that's what's kind of coming up on the drought. I'll just move on to the next topic, which is a construction update. So hopefully everyone's aware, we are building a treatment plant for PFOS removal for wells four and five, which are on Long Pond Road. And we opted to do kind of an emergency system where it's in pods, which are those blue pods. Those are our pods. They have shipped, two of them are at Robert B. Hours' facility in Harwich, waiting for their pads to be poured. Over on the left side photo is the beginning of the frames for the pads, the rebar is being set. That actually is done, and they're hoping to pour by the end of this week. So we'll have the pads, as soon as those have reached their concrete strength, we'll be able to put the pods on the pads and move forward from there. And Robert B. Hours is our contractor, and they're on an accelerated schedule to have it ready for Ad Edge, which is the company that made the pods and the treatment system, to begin startup at the first week of August. And just to preface that, I mean, startup is a process. It's not like you flick a switch and it goes on. The media has to be added, there's a lot of testing beforehand. We'll have to run the well to waste for a period of time and test for PFOS, make sure it's working. It takes at least a week to get a rush sample back, and then we'll have to get Mass DEP approval. So those startup is starting the first week in August. It probably won't run for a few weeks after that, run to the system, if we're lucky, if everything goes well. And just while we're on the topic of PFOS, Kleinfelder is our water consulting engineer, and they are starting to work on that long-term corrective action plan that we need to deal with well number 10 and potentially well number 11 for PFOS in the future. So that's underway. For well number nine, one of our largest sources, that's been offline since 2013 due to PCE. We are moving forward with getting that re-permitted. We had to go back to the state to get approval to run it again, had to do a pump test on it, so we've done all the steps the state has required so far. Unfortunately, over the last 10 years, a lot of the equipment inside the buildings had been scavenged for other uses, because the well wasn't running, so we need some, need a VFD, take it from there. Need a radio, take it from there. So it was missing pretty much all of the electronic equipment that is needed. So our SCADA installer has been there, got that done. We had a large tank, KOH tank, potassium hydroxide is our treatment that we use to control pH. Had a large tank of it sitting there for 10 years, so we had to get a company in to get it out and clean the tank. We've done that. We're putting the piping back together and the chemical feed building in-house, our crew is doing that. So we're hoping to get our instrumentation guy back by the end of this week and hopefully start testing and, and get that running in the next few weeks. We do need to get DEP's approval before we can run that to the system as well. And then as far as our last construction update, our Phase Two building improvement- And then as far as our last construction update, our Phase Two building improvements, which was pump stations 14 through 24, that project is complete. There's just a few punchless items, but it's complete. You can see on the right side, that shiny pump station with nice, clean floor, and it looks very, much better than it used to look. All the trim and roofs have been repaired, shown on the right side there. And now we're moving into Phase Three, which is all the CCFs, our Corrosion Control Facilities. There's 15 of those. And are building One Main, which is the former Water Department Office on Union Street. The CCFs mostly are just roofing. Maybe some of them have heaters that have to be replaced, a lot of rotting trim, as shown on the left side. And then kind of the bigger need is at, whoa, One Main, that building there, which also houses some town records. It is stucco, which is very strange for this area. And you can see in the picture in the middle that the stucco is just falling apart. So we'll get that fixed. We got the same contractor for Phase Three that we had for Phase Two, and they are excellent. And they're getting, ready to get working on as soon as August. And they have to be done by June 30th, 2024. And this last project, Phase Two, was delayed significantly because of electrical components, and this project doesn't require those components. So hopefully, we will finish that one on time. That's all I have.
Yes, I'd like to pause here to see if there's any water-related questions before we transition to the wastewater part of the update.
Peter, do you have any water-related questions?
Only, I, I see the town of Brewster has already put in voluntary water restrictions. Should we be looking at the, at the same, or are we comfortable where we are right now?
We do have voluntary restrictions. I guess we haven't, like, put it out in the newspaper, but in general, this is our, at all times, we want to be a Level Zero, normal, voluntary, odd-even.
Right, but my point is, if nobody knows about it, nobody knows about it.
Let's just see. But?
Yeah.
Yeah, we certainly were prepared to do some outreach if we were in a drought level one, two, three status, but it certainly would be helpful to do it in even the normal conditions that we're in. We can certainly do some outreach to let people know that we're in this current normal condition. It's voluntary because as Lori showed with one of the other diagrams, the system is not stressed, which I think is what this chart here shows best. But it is something we want to focus people on water conservation. It's a precious resource, and even in a situation where we have adequate supply, it's not something that we, that should be wasted. And certainly, irrigating your lawn every other day is appropriate. We do occasionally run into people that will irrigate every day, and that's a little excessive. A lawn really only needs one inch of rain for a whole week, and that can easily be accomplished with irrigating every other day. So we can do some normal conditions outreach, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would echo the need for that. I think what we need to do is, for water conservation, is we need to keep talking about it. If we only talk about it when things are bleak, then we're missing an opportunity to get people to sort of sustain the education, let people know the status that we're in. If they can take, you know, voluntary measures, that would be appreciated. I think, I'm totally on board with Selectman Smith's idea of the importance of just keeping messaging on water conservation out there. And it just makes it easier to keep people focused on it and thinking about it.
Great, absolutely.
The other thing on the water stuff, Mr. Chairman, I'm interested in a water tour. So that you're, you're doing work on the PFOS treatment plant. I'd love to, maybe there can be a Friday morning, or maybe there's a morning that's suitable for the board, and then we're just given an opportunity to sort of check on some of the projects that you're working on, just to kind of get, get a handle on what's happening. You know, Friday morning was always good before it gets really hot, you know? So spending a couple of hours at the beginning of the day, just to get out and about and see what's happening, you know, at, at Wells Four and Five, the PFOS treatment plant there. Maybe taking a look at some of the pumping stations, you know? I'm amazed at the before and after on the pump. I mean, the pumping stations were in really rough shape before. I mean, they were awful. It was almost embarrassing, quite frankly. So I think being able to see the great work that's being done in the pumping stations would be good as well. And if there's something else that we need to see, you know, as water commissioners, you know, as you can tell, we have a huge interest in our, in our water system. So, yeah, I, I think periodically, field trips, making it available for us is, is always a good idea. And I think now's a good time to be thinking about something, so I just want to put that out there as well.
Absolutely. We're happy to put something together.
Marcus.
No questions, thank you.
Here.
I'm curious, on the PFOS portable treatment, can you remind me what that's going to treat till? Does that get us to the state levels or beyond?
It should bring the level to non-detect.
Non-detectable. Did the federal regulations change at all?
They're in the process. They put out the draft version of the regulations, which will be, they're different than the way Massachusetts does it. We, Massachusetts combined six. They're regulating two specifically, and then they have a risk factor vision for four other PFOS that are different than Massachusetts is. So it will, for those first two that are individually monitored, it may impact our well number 11. That's why I brought that in.
How long do you envision before well nine comes onboard?
I'm hoping to have it up within a month, maybe less, if we can, if everything works.
Even with all the work that you have to do with testing and getting it back online?
Okay.
And just as a curiosity, has any steps been taken on the registration of irrigation systems at this point?
As of yet. We've had some other projects we're focusing on, but it is something we'll be looking at in the very near future, yes.
You guys have a lot on your plate. Not pushing, just curious where we were on that. Like Mark said, I, you know, as water commissioners, I just, I really appreciate getting this information regularly. It would be great if we met with you guys like quarterly, just so that we kept our fingers on the pulse of what's happening. And I'm really delighted to see that we're doing okay with the water this summer because it was, we've gotten a lot of rain, but you just never know, you know? And they said with the drought conditions last year, that there was some talk about it taking years to recover. And so I wasn't sure where we were on that.
Yeah, I think from the, from the chart, that's a great point. I think from the chart, you can see that we are in a period that still is not the best conditions that the aquifer's ever been in, but it's not the worst either. So it's something, as I mentioned before, we need to be aware of conservation and conserving the resource because, and it could quickly change. I think that's what Lori mentioned before. It could quickly deteriorate. We are in a period where it's dropping off. It could, you know, for the next few months, continue to drop and even go lower than we'd expect on a seasonal basis. So it's something to constantly be aware of and to constantly be trying to provide conservation and protection of that resource.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Lori, just a real quick question. On the far left side, when does the chart start?
August 31st, 1963.
Okay, so it goes 63 to current, current day. Oh, fantastic.
Yeah.
So is there, is there a way to discern a trend in that where we can say that on average our water supply is sort of either on a decline? I mean, this is basically determining the depth to groundwater, correct?
Yes.
That's the top part.
Yes.
And obviously, in looking at this, you see a huge dip in the beginning of this. So clearly, for a period of time, we had a huge drop-off. And, but it just seems to continually work in a cycle. But overall, is there an average? Are we pretty much average, above average, below average? What's the, what would your assessment be in terms of depth to groundwater?
I would say that, you know, based upon the data we have before us right there, it would be pretty close to average conditions.
Yeah.
As Lori mentioned, it could change quickly. I think the only trend that I, you know, can see from this is just the seasonal trend. I think you had mentioned that before. We're definitely on a seasonal downtrend in the summertime. That's typical.
Yeah, but that's also an area that, why it's important, I think, keep on the messaging of conservation. I noticed in the article that I sent around to folks from the Cape Cod Chronicle on the water conservation measures that Brewster had talked about. Paul Anderson, who is the Water Superintendent, very talented guy, very sharp. He had mentioned that he was concerned about the overall health of the Sagamore lens. They made a sort of a brief observation, and that certainly got my attention. He's not one to normally make reckless statements. I've been anxious to call him up to find out if he could clarify that. That's the reason why I'm asking these questions is, and I know this is just one monitoring well location. There are monitoring wells all over the Cape that USGS monitors as part of the Comprehensive National Groundwater Monitoring Network. And I've noticed that his observations were more directed to the wells that are at, in Sandwich by that area. So I'm not sure. I guess what I would say is, is that as we monitor the health of water resources, the question in my mind is, what, what's the best mix of monitoring wells that we might want to keep tabs on, you know? I mean, it's great that we're looking at the one in Barnstable, but there may be some value in having a handful of monitoring wells, just so that we can see overall. Because so much of our water comes out of that Sagamore lens and flows sort of downhill from that area. So just, just a thought, just an observation. But I, I'm certainly curious as to why Mr. Anderson expressed some real concern about the health of the Sagamore lens.
Quite sure myself. I mean, this is the period where we were last year, where it's at really low. That, that was a concerning period. Now that we're up here by that orange dot, I'd say we're in a much better situation than last year, but something to still watch very closely.
Yeah, so next time you have coffee with Paul, Jeff, ask him.
I will. I noticed the Chronicle also had the wrong picture of Paul, but we won't go into that.
Yeah.
Okay, we're ready to move on to the next segment.
The wastewater update. This is the rendition of what the treatment facility, at least the plant operations building, will look like here on the right. We just passed a major milestone at the 60% design plans that were provided in March of 2023. The construction estimate, just to be clear, is, at that point, was $109 million. We've made some adjustments at each major milestone within the treatment plant project to, to stay within the budget. So we'll continue to make those adjustments. The next opportunity for some adjustments to stay within the budget will be at the 90% design stage. Those are due August 4th. So just a few short weeks from now, we'll be having the 90% design plans for the treatment facility, anticipating a advertisement of November of this year. So that'll include bidding and that whole process for winter, early spring of 2024. We need to award the contract by June 30th of 2024. And on the track that we're currently on, we should be well ahead of that. So we'll meet that SRF, State Revolving Fund deadline of June 30th.
Before you change that slide, the 109 million cost estimate, how does that match with the estimate that we had at town meeting?
It, it matches, and then the reason why is we've made some adjustments in the design. So as we need to, we make adjustments. We've identified some things that could potentially be alternates during the bidding process that, you know, could help us to continue to stay within budget. So we're hyper-focused on maintaining the budget that we committed to at town meeting.
Thank you.
For not just the treatment plant, but also the collection systems, which I'll go into shortly. So this is a more planned view of the, the site. The Water Division offices are right here, so this kind of helps envision.
Can you point out where they are again?
Sure, it's this building right here.
Right there, that's where.
That's the existing building.
Lori's office is right over there.
Exactly. Hers is right there in the corner. And that big cleared area out back is essentially where the rest of this is located. So it's very few trees that need to be removed as part of this process. It's already cleared. It's being used as a spray irrigation field for the seppage facility. So for water processing currently is being used at this site. Right now, the design is for infiltration beds, which are these four items here. A lot of the treatment, the industrial components are in these, this tankage here. This is the building you just saw on the previous slide, which houses the office, the laboratory, you know, the portions that are where the operators will be primarily working out for the facility. The rest of the buildings are primarily related to odor control, solids handling, things of that nature. Again, very kind of industrial kind of components. This shows a little bit better graphic of what the major components of that treatment look like. Again, it's very large tankage. It's a sequencing batch reactor type of technology, which is what these tanks are right here. Gives you a good 3D image. Now that we're this far along in the design process, you can start to see renderings like this that are really helpful to envision what this will look like.
Before you go, Jeff, I noticed in one slide, we refer to the project as Water Resource Recovery Facility. And then I know on others, we call it Treatment Facility. These are basically the same thing, right?
They are the same thing.
Right.
We try to use the.
They should all say WRR.
All, right, so in the next version of the slides, we can maybe make that adjustment. That would be helpful.
Yes, absolutely. Water Resource Recovery Facility is what we should be referring to that is. I do find myself, when I'm talking to people, slip into the treatment because it's, it's easier for people to understand. But, you know, from a formal designation, it should be what's listed on this slide.
Yeah, I just wanted to flag that because I, I know what you're trying to do, and sometimes it takes sustained discipline to stick with the, the, the correct terminology and messaging.
Yes.
Let me ask you another question on this. As we know, wastewater treatment plants are incredibly expensive to operate, and I'm sure a lot of thought has been given to that. Do we have any solar or other renewable energy options that we're thinking about at that site?
Yeah, that's a great question. That is actually one of the stipulations as far as our MEPA permit was considered, that we look to provide solar primarily above the infiltration beds. I mean, really, wherever it's available on the site, but it seems like the most ready, available space for that, where we don't have to reserve, you know, other treed locations. It's a big site generally, but above the rapid infiltration beds is what's being anticipated right now.
Because I'm on the Cape and Vineyard Electric Cooperative Board, and as folks here know, as the board knows, we do a lot, there are a lot of Yarmouth SEVAC projects. And they're looking for more, the, the board, the team is looking for more solar projects in Yarmouth. And this, this may be a potential candidate site for SEVAC to do solar for the town, so I just.
It'll probably be our largest site too, because as you mentioned, the large electricity needs are going to be primarily offset with potential, a large solar right here. So that's the, the graphic kind of showing this treatment facility in 3D. Now moving on to the collection system. These are the contracts that are laid out in color here, Contracts One through Six. One, we've just talked about, which is the treatment facility or the Water Resource Recovery Facility. And then we've got Contracts Two, Three, Four, Five, and Six, all incolored here. Primarily, it's along Route 28 and South Shore Drive down here. So a little more detail on regards to the schedule for those contracts. Contract Two is tentatively awarded to Robert B. Hour Company. The price for their bid was $19,875,618. We are waiting on authorization to award from the State Revolving Fund program, but they're, that's on track to start this fall. We won't have a solid commitment as to what the start date is and what their construction schedule specifically is until we award that and start those discussions with the contractor, but we're very close to doing so. Contract Three is very similar. That's with Rivoli Construction, they're an off-Cape firm. Their base bid was just shy of $18 million. And again, awaiting on the permission, authorization to award from the State Revolving Fund. Also another contract that's on schedule for construction this fall. The specific date to be determined after we award and get their schedule. Contracts Four is one that is, just to jump back a slide, is the one that is over, connected with the Bass River Bridge Replacement Project. That's a partnership with Mass DOT. I did have a conversation just today with the project manager for Mass DOT, and we are on schedule to meet our requirements to award this contract within the Mass DOT project. So that's a good partnership project that. So that's a good partnership project that will save the town significant funds with doing a project where they're reconstructing intersection, putting in a new bridge, and we're putting in pipes in the ground for both water as well as wastewater. So that's moving forward. That is currently anticipated that we, they will be advertising that in April of 2024. So I did mention as part of my discussion with the, the project manager that we can't let that, that schedule slip too much, but if they commit to that date that they currently have for advertising, we should be able to make that project work with them and our commitment to the State Revolving Fund. And then we have contract number five, which is the essentially one half of Route 28. It's from the Barnstable Town Line to the Parkers River Bridge. And that is at the 90% design. We had sewer design that was previously done. It needs to be updated from our, our previous efforts 10 years ago, but it is essentially at the 90% design stage, just needs to be finalized and completed. We're looking to continue to do that in conjunction with Mass DOT, potentially with a early utility phase of their project. The overall reconstruction of the road, the paving, the sidewalks, the shared use path, that's scheduled for 2028. But they are committed to, if at all possible, accelerating the utility project to, to meet our schedule. So we had some discussions as recently as today about that and how we can work together for that contract. And then the final contract is contract six, which are three pumping stations that are along Route 28, primarily over here at Town Brook, and then kind of halfway between that and the drive-in site. Those are the three pump stations that are part of contract six. There'll also be potentially other work that's outside of the state right of way that could be concluded in part of contract six as well. So that is anticipated to be bid and awarded next spring as well, again, meeting the June 30th of 2024 deadline that we have for that project. So we are on schedule for our work, and that's where we are with regards to wastewater. And happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Jeff, the pumping station that you're going to have at the Riverwalk area, I mean, having heard the previous presentation on the vulnerability study, are there any changes you need to make to what you're going to be doing for the pumping station? Or is that?
Not necessarily based on, on that report. That report, I think, a primary focus was on existing infrastructure. All the new infrastructure that we'll be building is anticipating sea level rise. There's requirements to elevate structures. So all those pump stations will be elevated above the flood elevations with a conservative elevation above that as well. So it's not just, you know, matching the current flood elevations. We're actually elevating it another, you know, foot above the current flood elevation. So we're anticipating sea level rise in our current designs. And so that was already anticipated before this last study came out. But it's certainly important study that they have, are doing on the existing infrastructure. All the new infrastructure will meet all these standards we've been discussing.
Okay. Thank you.
Great presentation. As always, I'm always so impressed with all the balls that are in the air, and you're getting it all done. Really, congratulations to all of you. It's amazing feat to get all this done on time, on budget. I'm hearing one concern a lot from people, and I just want to run it by you. With the treatment plant, WRF.
WRF.
WRF. Is there any concern about odors? Are we going to be able to mitigate that to a point where neighbors are not going to notice an issue?
The short answer is yes. We've visited a number of facilities, making sure we get that element, you know, correct. And the modern technology with odor control is, is unbelievable. And I'm absolutely confident we'll be able to mitigate that. You'll be able to walk through the facility and, and notice hardly any odor at all. And our nearest neighbors are, you know, 600 or 700 feet away. This is a nice thing about this facility is it is pretty well buffered. These are the nearest neighbors here, and we've visited a number of treatment facilities where the neighbors are much closer with no complaints using modern odor control.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, every time I drive through Barnstable, I'm like, oh, boy, that's not what we want.
Also with our, I'm sorry, just also with our current treatment plant, we have an odor issue still. Has that new piece gone in that we're supposed to update the odor control there?
It has not. So we're in the process of working through the study and design associated with the odor control for that facility.
Sorry, Dan.
No, that was my question. It was perfect.
Are there any other questions?
No, I'm, I'm all set. No, this was a good update. I'm, I agree with my colleagues about the need to do this continually on a regular basis. Yeah, I think, I think we feel a little bit out of touch. Yeah, if all of a sudden, you know, we go a period of time without a wastewater update, it's sort of like, it's unusual, you know? So yeah, we like seeing you. We like getting updated, and we appreciate all the good work that's going on.
Great, thank you.
Excellent update. I don't have any further questions or comments, so thank you very much.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you for this. This is, I just asked for that.
Next item of discussion, Cape Cod Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO election process.
I don't know, we have so many MPO people around that, that can do this. Maybe I'll just kick it off, but it's a critical piece, and this is for members of the Board of Selectmen. This fall, there's going to be an election for an additional member of the MPO that is open to members of the Board of Selectmen. And in our subregion, it's Dennis and Yarmouth, and I believe it's the Yarmouth term to get a person elected to this. Now, it's important to note, well, first of all, the, the folks on the MPO, we have represented in the county is Mark Forrest, and from DPW, Jeff Colby, representing the Transit Authority is Bob Lawton. So there's, there's three people on it right now. And with this election in the fall, there's an opportunity for an additional selectman to get on it.
Let me ask, Jeff, are you a voting member? I don't think you are. Yeah, Jeff is a voting on the JTC. So Bob Lawton and I are voting members on the MPO. I serve as the Cape Cod, the county commissioners' designee, and Bob is the designee from the Regional Transit Authority. And by the way, Bob has been with the Transit Authority as the Yarmouth rep on that board forever. I think he goes back to day one, which is amazing. It's like 1981. They probably should have some award.
Does a great job with bird dogging our projects. He comes in, we talk about him, he updates me, and he, you know, called my attention to the, the fact that, you know, that they've been working to get the Route 28 project back on the tip for the subregion.
Well, I've been sort of the bulldog on that to make sure that that happens.
He does, he comes in and, and shows me the paperwork.
He'll, he'll, he'll let you know what's happening. Yeah, I'm, I'm glad we're able to get it back on the tip. The challenge is going to be the 28, 29 million and counting, right? But there is an election. So did we, when we reorganized, Mr. Chairman, did we already designate, did we choose someone? Who would be our person to be on the?
Did not.
Okay. So I guess we need to think of who that person's going to be. And since it, we did post this, it's on our agenda, it's, it's probably worth a conversation about who might be interested in serving. I do know that in Dennis, the way Dennis did it last time, since they had it for the last three-year or, is it a three-year term for the seat? Is that what it is, Bob?
Yes, three-year term.
Three-year term. So pri, the last three-year term, it was Cheryl McMahon. And then when she stepped down from the board, Jim Plath stepped in. But Jim Plath set it up so that there was an alternate, so that the DPW director could fill in if Plath couldn't be there. I think I've got that right. And so I, I would recommend for the board to consider, obviously, I'm, I'm disqualified since I'm already on the board and rep, and playing a, wearing a different hat.
We don't need two of you on there.
Exactly. Thanks. I think a board member or as an alternate, you know, it's not like Jeff doesn't have other things to do, but he goes to all the meetings. He's always paying attention. I think at le, at the, at very least, considering Jeff Colby to be designated as our alternate. So those are, those are my thoughts.
I thought Jeff was already on there.
He's not, he attends the meeting, but he's not a voting member. No, this is coming, you, you want to have Yarmouth, the Yarmouth Board wants to have, should have a voting member on this committee.
When does the committee meet?
Meets generally once a month, and it's usually on a Monday at 1:00 PM, usually the second or third Monday, 1:00 PM. Do I have that right? I think so. Yeah. So that's, and the meetings last, you should budget 90 minutes. And there, there are regular topics that come up. One is the Sagamore Bourne Bridge, Bridges. Remember now, the membership of the MPO is such that you have a number of municipal officials representing, and they're usually selectmen, representing the regions. You have Mass DOT well represented, the Cape Cod Commission well represented, and then there are these designees, like the county commissioners having a representative. So it's clearly the, the major transportation planning policy board for Barnstable County. So for example, when, when the Route 28 project fell off, the tip, when we got the updated tip and the Yarmouth project wasn't there, that's kind of when I started bellyaching about what happened and started pressing to get the project back on it. So by having someone on the tip going to bat for Yarmouth stuff, and actually, you know, mid-Cape projects, you know, Dennis, if you look at where most of the money is being spent for transportation projects, Yarmouth and Barnstable are among the two top communities for transportation funding, at least for road improvements.
So where do they hold the meetings?
The meetings right now are done virtually.
All of them?
All of them, right now. Yeah, years ago, they used to be in person, but they've been held virtually. They're by Zoom, and they're generally very well attended. And so you've got Mass DOT well represented, the towns well represented by region, a couple of county boards, and then there are a number of ex officio, non-voting members, like the Army Corps of Engineers, the National Park Service, the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe. So, and the structure of it was set by an act of Congress. When, years ago, when the transportation bill was reauthorized, the MPOs were created by the Congress as a way to sustain local involvement, local, regional involvement in transportation planning. And it, that was a smart decision, and this whole planning process works well. So I think the question is, is, you know, among the four members, you know, on the board, not me, me of course, but the four others amongst yourselves, to have someone on there is important.
So when does the Yarmouth term start?
Yarmouth term, I think it would start at the beginning of the year. So the election that would be done this fall would be for the term beginning in January. Do I have that right, Bob?
January 1, 2024 to December 31, 2026.
There you go.
Correct.
So that would be the appointment. And I think the biggest lift for whoever takes this on is to period, is to regularly bring up Route 28 and, and the Yarmouth projects. But there are other projects as well. For example, the MPO has been involved in planning related to EV stations here on the Cape and sort of helping boost the electric vehicle market here to make the Cape an attractive place for people with electric cars. There's bike trail projects come up all the time. That's part of the, you know, those are transportation projects that get involved in. As you know, we've had a huge interest in bike trails here in Yarmouth, and potential expansion has come up. So it's, the meetings move at a reasonably brisk pace. I mean, I'll say 90 minutes, but it moves along, and it's very comprehensive information. And like I said, it's the place where the, a lot of the big transportation decisions are made. Periodically, we'll get updates from the Steamship Authority. The MPO has been involved in related projects. So if, if.
Who runs the meetings? Who presides over the meetings?
The meetings are presided over, there's a chair. The chair is the Secretary of Transportation's designee. He's a voting member. I forget his name. But the, the, the mechanics of the meeting are run by Cape Cod Commission staff. So the Cape Cod Commission really does a lot of the staff work for the MPO. And it was unfortunate, the other day, there was a story in the Cape Cod Times about how we're having public comment on the draft transportation improvement plan. And I think the headline was that no, no one's paying attention or no one seems to care. And, you know, that's certainly unfortunate, but, I mean, the reality is, is that these plans need to be transparent. They need, our planning process needs to be a public process. And if there are individuals that choose not to participate, well, that's certainly their choice. But a lot of work goes, goes into public meetings and public forums to make people aware of what's going on. So there was a meeting, a public forum on the draft plan at the Transportation Center, and I think maybe only one or two people showed up. And it wasn't the most flattering story, but, you know, we're not in the business of, you know, drawing a lot of attention to ourselves, you know, as an MPO, so.
How many people typically attend one of these meetings?
These meetings will typically, will have, well, there's the, there's the MPO membership. And let me, and I would say, minutes. I would say, I'm looking at our.
I've got a copy of the minutes here.
Okay. So for voting members, you probably have about 12 people. Ex officio members, it's probably another half a dozen. So at the meeting, you'll probably have, I'd say 15 to 20 people, including staff. Mass DOT is well represented, so if you're interested in doing Mass DOT projects, you Now, it mentions selectmen, but there's no reason why you can't, you know, like I said, if you wanted to have as an alternate, whether it's Jeff or the town administrator, you know, those would probably be the two best candidates, you know, as an alternate, as a backup for a board member. I don't see any town administrators on here.
Could you do that? Could you have a selectman and then have two alternate members named as well?
Like I said, Dennis did that.
Not by what they have discussed in, in their bylaws here.
It says that, it says that?
It, it's, it's a strange process. First of all, they're saying it's open only to selectmen, and a board can't submit a nomination. Individual selectman has to send Steve Tupper an email by October 10th expressing an interest, sort of self-nomination. And then they call you up and say, are you willing to serve this? And if you are, then they put you on the ballot, so to speak, for a roll call vote by all of the other selectmen in your subregion, which is Yarmouth and Dennis for us. And I, I'm not sure, we'll have to investigate the mechanics of how, how they give voting rights to, to the alternate.
In the bylaws, it does not make a provision for an alternate. That's good to know.
But Jim Plath made it.
He, he attended, when, when he was designated, he was at every one of the meetings. And still continues to be at every one of the meetings.
Did anybody ever object to that, to that arrangement?
No one flagged it. But then again, I have to, I have to ask myself in doing, they do roll call votes because they're virtual meetings, everything's roll call vote. I have to admit, I don't ever recall them calling Tom Andreed on a roll call. So, so they may have allowed him to participate in terms of communicating, but in terms of roll call votes, I think they, they pretty much stick to the, to the bylaws. So if there's no provision in there, then my sense is, is that. So if there's no provision in there, then my sense is, is that an alternate does not vote. Yeah. So we still have a little bit of time, right, Bob?
October.
October 10 is the deadline to send your email to Steve Tupper.
Right.
And his email address is in the material here.
So what would be helpful is to have the board designate someone as its preference, and then have that communicated by email to them. And my sense is, is that that would be five members of the board voting for that individual. And I don't think the Dennis officials would object. They generally don't vote. They, or they would vote in support of whoever.
We didn't vote for any of the Dennis
Right.
folks, right?
Right. Right. So what happened was, when, when I was appointed by the board the last time, I think we sent a letter in indicating that the board had voted for me to be the representative for Yarmouth, since it was Yarmouth's turn, and then, before you know it, there was a meeting of the MPO, and they, they approved my, my candidacy, let's say.
This is history.
And the rest is history, yes. I have to admit, I enjoy going to these meetings, believe it or not, because they're just, they're filled with tons of information on some very interesting transportation stuff that's being done. And you'll see that when we talk about Route 28 in Yarmouth, and how, you know, Mass DOT is looking at ways to make Route 28, the Route 28 corridor, as they make improvements, they're looking at ways to make things pedestrian, you know, pedestrian safety is a priority, bike access is a priority, public safety. You know, they don't just do typical resurfacing projects, it seems anymore, but they're very focused on other aspects to make the roadways a bit more user-friendly. I know they're doing a lot of design improvements and streetscape improvements along Route 28 and Dennis. So these are the things that can get talked about in our meetings, so you get a perspective on what's happening Cape-wide with some of these projects. So it's, to me, like I said, I, I enjoy participating in the meetings, and I'm not, and I'm, I'm not shy. So.
Okay, so we'll have to bring this back in a timely way, right? Probably a little later than September. Right? Put it on and take some action on it. Is there anything else we need to talk about on that item? No? So I'm gonna go to Dorcas. She has resignation, and she has a couple of reappointments.
Uh, first, I would like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Evelyn Beal from the Disability Commission, and to do so with her, thanks for her service.
So moved. What a wonderful person.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes by a 4-0 vote, one member absent.
Make a motion that we reappoint Susan Britta to the Planning Board for a three-year term, which will run through July 2026.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on Susan Britta's appointment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes by a vote of 4-0, one member absent.
Recommend to reappoint Will Rubenstein as a regular member to the Planning Board, with the reappointment being for a three-year term, which will run through July 2026.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously by a 4-0 vote, one member absent.
Okay, and I move to reappoint Sam Lawrence as an alternate member of the Historical Commission. This appointment is for a one-year term, which will run through July of 2024.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes by unanimous vote, 4-0, one member absent.
Thank you. That concludes...
Thank you, Dorcas. And that brings us to an upcoming agenda review. And we are gonna be in August already, I guess, the next meeting. You're, that's the one you're gonna be on vacation, huh, Bob?
That's correct, and...
Bill gets to sit in that seat.
Bill's got the, the big job. I, I don't think we need the wastewater update.
He's waited a long time.
You can pull that, I think. Don't you think, Mr. Chairman, we can pull wastewater update from August?
Yes. Say that again?
We can pull wastewater update.
Yeah, we can pull that one, yes. That was a good update, so probably put it on, you know, later on in August, early September, again, probably. So we have, um...
Can I add a suggested item, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
For August 1, I followed very closely the Yarmouth Zoning Board of Appeals review of the Monstrosity Cell Phone Tower that Blue Sky was proposing. The ZBA took it up on the 13th of July. I watched the full video, start to finish, of the meeting. I would say it was a very spirited board discussion, and I, I have to commend the zoning board for the way in which they reviewed and deliberated and scrutinized the proposal. And they really called on the developer to look at a variety of options, much less intrusive. And it was clear that there, that there was not a spirit of cooperation. I'll just leave it at that. And the zoning board rejected the petition. And I would like to put on, as an agenda item for our next meeting, that the board endorse the ZBA decision on this particular project.
Yeah. I tried to get that video and couldn't get it, but I understand somebody else went to YouTube today and it was available. So I do wanna, I do wanna review that.
I would encourage everyone to...
I don't have a problem with what you're saying, but I think we should be very careful going forward, because my guess is, on a project like that, there's a good chance you're gonna get an appeal.
They're gonna try to accuse the zoning board of using information outside of their hearing.
And I'm gonna tell you why I say that. Generally, if you watch Board of Appeals hearings, and again, the part about this particular hearing is hearsay. I haven't reviewed the tape yet. But every Board of Appeals hearing that I've seen, where it doesn't look like the proponent's gonna be successful, the board chairman will give them the opportunity to withdraw without prejudice. And I am told by somebody who really understands the mechanics of all this that that opportunity was given to the developer or the proponent of this project, and they declined, meaning they wanted a decision.
Yes, that's true.
And that leads me to believe that the prospect of an appeal is, is pretty good. So endorsing the decision, I, I suppose that's fairly innocuous, but I don't think I'd go beyond that in terms of any real commentary or anything.
Is the, excuse me, the Board of Selectmen in the appointing authority for the ZBA?
Correct.
We are. You just, we've gotta watch out for that relationship then. Yeah.
Well, the reason, the reason why I'm interested in having it on the agenda is because a number of town boards and committees have commented on it. And I think one of our responsibilities is periodically to go to bat for the various boards and committees and staffers that weigh in on these things. For us to be silent...
The more I think about it, with Bill's comment of being the appointing authority, I'd hate to be an exhibited trial with a video saying, you see, the Board of Appeals, they added on, on duly influences board and whatever. Because they do have independent statutory authority under the Mass General laws. I would leave this to another day.
To your recommendation, is that an endorsement could be counterproductive?
Well, I think, let me put it this way. I would leave it until the appeal period expired. And if there's no appeal, we'll put it on the agenda, because then there's no, there's no ramifications for an appeal. You got, I mean, lawyers typically will cast a broad net when they file an appeal.
Sure.
If one thing fails, may, who knows, maybe another thing will succeed. I, I'm not so sure we should give, give anybody... And again, I haven't even seen the hearing or the, or the
Well, I'm...
videos, which I'm very interested in, because it's a, it's a unique, it's a unique project, you know. I mean, how many of those have we had?
Yeah.
I can't remember another one.
No, I'm, I hear what you're saying. I think if, if there's a reason to defer,
Yeah, I would, I would defer on it.
Then, but I, I would like an opportunity to bring it back at an appropriate time.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I think they, I think that project...
You don't want someone knocking on your door, handing you a subpoena.
I have no problem with that. I have no, no, I think, I think the project clearly got what it deserved.
You get to see Dan up at the Superior Court.
Yeah, I could, I have no problem seeing Dan. Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not shy about weighing in. You know, obviously, I raise it as an option for the board, and I'm happy to talk about it more.
And to be honest with you, even aside from what I've said, I really wouldn't wanna endorse something unless I reviewed the tapes myself and...
Well, that's why I suggested we bring it up at a future meeting, so that people have the time to review the tape and at least give it some consideration. I think, I, I would recommend that we at least do that. And then maybe at the meeting, for whatever reason, there may be reasons that you suggested, where we, we defer on it and just table it, rather than make a decision, may, maybe for reasons that are based on council's advice that maybe we hold off on.
The other message you, you gotta be careful of, that you don't wanna send boards, is that you're gonna kinda get overly involved with them exercising their functions. We approve of this, we don't approve of that. I mean, my philosophy, my philosophy is, you appoint someone to a board, you let them do their job.
Yeah, well, I don't...
And even if you don't agree with the outcome of their decision, unless there's some impropriety, you know, if somebody's got just a terrible demeanor and they're mistreating people or something like that, I don't think the selectmen should really get involved. That's just my view.
No, I understand. I've been on this board since 2017. I've never felt the need to say anything about, I've felt generally... But I think this is an issue that speaks to a lot of interests that are of direct concern to the town. And I have no problem speaking, speaking out against it in support of the zoning board. I understand what you're saying. I respect your point of view. And all I would recommend is that board members, put it on the agenda, have board members look at it. If at the meeting, we decide to table it, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to abide by the considerations of the board. But at least I would recommend looking at it.
I'm not, I'm not comfortable putting...
Not a good idea?
I mean...
All right, then I withdraw the request.
I think, I think the issue, just generally speaking, of a lot of folks that, you know, the Zoning Board of Appeals has had a lot of attention lately because of a number of, you know, different cases and decisions that they've made, and, and I think folks that have followed the testimony at these hearings
Yeah.
and the demeanor of the various applicants, is extremely proud of the Zoning Board of Appeals and the way they sifted through the evidence and made a decision in the best interests of the town. And, and I think, you know, we're all sharing that, that just sense of gratitude for their hard work. And, and the only issue is that, you know, they are required to use a very narrow set of information that was testimony to make a decision. And, and now, you know, you may have an applicant that is looking for other avenues to try to create things that don't exist. And I, I wouldn't want anyone to come forward and say that the Zoning Board of Appeals, you know, that this is reflective of some input that they received outside of the hearing, that this is reflective of potential pressure, and those types of issues. I, I just have been through so many Zoning Board of Appeals, appeals to their decisions. Some I've won, some I've lost, some, you know, the, the courts seem strange in that, you know, what they use for reasoning on, on, you know, picking on a various member or this or that.
Listen, the last thing that I wanna do is give the applicant a reason to somehow prevail, so if, if it makes sense...
If I'm incorrect and there's no appeal, and the appeal period's foreclosed, then fine, you can, you know...
I understand. All right, I brought it up. I, 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 I hear what you're saying.
Let's look at the agenda. Anybody on the, on the August 1st, we're gonna have...
Housing.
It's the housing evening.
Which begs the question, Norm Holcomb and...
Oh, yeah, the update, yeah.
Should we be putting him on the agenda for that as well?
He, um, he's not gonna, I don't believe he's gonna be here that day. Isn't that the date he's unavailable? In his email.
Yeah, he may have indicated that.
Well, if not that date, then how about our next meeting, which would be the 15th?
I can't be here on the 15th, and why would we hold it off just because now Norm can't be there?
Well, I just mean, add, no, not housing. Housing definitely, I, I'm talking about Norm himself.
I think he's been raising all these legal questions that...
About the Forest Road Project.
Yeah, yeah, I, 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 you know, I appreciate, I, I don't, I, I just think we're ill-equipped as a board to be making legal questions. I think, I just assume have that stuff get worked out by council.
So re, here's my understanding of, of where the board is and how they come to this. So he raised a lot, a lot of different issues, and then the board, the board's feeling was, well, we wanna talk about the threshold issue first, a legal issue. In other words, if this is a housing authority project, then why discuss all these other things? So we're still waiting for a detailed opinion on that question, so we don't, we don't have it yet, number one. Number two, I think Norm was upset that the Housing Production Plan and, and the potent, the, the Yarmouth Housing Authority issue didn't come up at the last meeting. But we didn't do anything to take him off the agenda. We had him on the agenda. And the gentleman from, he was newly appointed, I guess, to take John Reed's position.
Oh, the newly elected.
He walked into, he, I was up in, I was in, I was in the Town Administration Office. He came in, said, we're not gonna be ready. First of all, I just got involved with the board. I need to be updated. The board's not ready to go forward. And he's talking to me. He says, is that good enough? Well, Mary Wigan was also in there, so I said, have her talk to Bob about that. If you guys aren't ready, then, I mean, there's no point in talking any further, so that was removed. And then the people with, for the Housing Production Plan said, we don't have our consultant. We're not ready to go forward. So neither I nor anybody on the staff did anything to reschedule that. They, these people just kinda backed out.
Right, yeah.
Um, so we got him on now for the 1st, and then Norm responds, and said, well, the 1st, you know, I'm not gonna be there in the 1st. So, um, that's number, that's the first point I wanted to make. The second point I wanted to make, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought it was the board's position that this is going to be a Yarmouth Housing Authority project. And we were pushing for them, the Yarmouth Housing Authority, to have a public forum. So people could come in and say, what are you building? Where's it gonna be? How many units is it gonna be? And raise whatever issues they wanted to raise. And raise whatever issues they wanted to raise. And the selectmen would also have the opportunity to attend that meeting and, and get more informed.
That's my understanding.
That's where I think we left it, left this, left off.
Right.
So if I'm incorrect.
So, we envisioning them having the meeting and we go, or are they coming here?
Well, they're, I, I guess they're coming here to give us an update, but, but in terms of to answer your question with the meeting. I assume it's gonna be their meeting, that's what, that's what the board wanted to see happen. In other words, if we were building a project, I mean, that's the way we would operate, right? We would, we would have a, you know, people would come in and ask questions, there'd be a presentation, probably be more than one meeting.
We would've done it a long time ago, I know that, I wouldn't have waited this long.
So I don't even know where they are, I don't even know what their proposal is, I haven't seen anything, has anybody else seen anything?
I haven't seen anything.
Seen what Mary has shown us, right.
I haven't even seen that.
I'm just hoping that they're going to come in and say to us, you know, we're, we're going forward and we're planning our public meeting on such and such a date, so that we could, you know.
Something to announce.
Right.
So tell everybody, go to their forum on.
People are questioning water tables, all kinds of things, density. I, I would assume at a meeting like that, they would have their consultants present to address those questions.
Well, if they're gonna come to us, I think, you know, at the next meeting, then these are the things that I would want them to hear from us on. That we want them to be able to answer those questions.
So. Yeah. I think what we're envisioning is not to have them address this piecemeal in the course of their regular meetings, but to have a public forum. Dedicated to this one issue, like at the senior center or someplace like that.
Absolutely, and at least one meeting, I would be encouraging them to have more than one.
Sure.
For a subject like this.
It's, it's a big deal to a lot of people.
It is.
Okay.
You know what I don't understand is why is it taking the attorney so long to be responsive to these questions?
Well, that's a good question, that's a question that I kinda raised with Bob the other day, is we, we gotta get.
We sent him another letter and he indicated that he was on it, and then he's been corresponding, he's looking for additional documents, today he was, and so. I know he's in the midst of developing his opinion, double checking everything.
I mean, the, the issue spans almost four town meetings, so it's, you know, from the initial discussion of it all the way through, you know, several iterations. And then there's also, you know, proposals to the board, and so he's gonna cover all that ground. And as Bob said, you know, it's going back to once in a minutes in 1985, so.
Yeah, no, I know, and that's why I wanted, instead of a very brief, result-oriented question like yes or no. Because you can't really address a lot of the commentary coming our way with that kind of a, a, a brief explanation. Say, well, this is because of this, or this is because of that. The other question is, once we get this information, the board, I'm assuming, would probably. Wanna confer with counsel about it after they read the opinion, probably in an executive session. He could, you know, he doesn't necessarily have to be here, he could come in by Zoom or something like that, who may have questions about that. So. We're not, we're not trying to, we're not the ones that are delaying these things, I, I can assure you of that.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, when it began, we were very diligent in getting the records to Mr. Holcomb. I mean, the community development director had a, you know, excellent set of sequential documents that we then scanned and turned over to him. And I sat down with him twice and went over all those records to make sure there was an understanding what they meant. And then he posed his questions and now it's in, you know, legal counsel's hands.
Okay, so, then on the fifteenth, we have that standard factor of one annual tax classification hearing. And we're gonna have an airport community meeting, which should take some time. I don't know if anyone has anything else.
You also have the Route 28 project update, we learned that DOT is available.
That's gonna be the fifteenth, right?
Update the board on the plan, so we wanna take advantage of that.
DOT, Route 28, yep. Update, that's gonna be good too, yep. And when did they say they were gonna do a public forum?
They're looking to do a public hearing, which, that's an actual requirement. The week, the way they explained it to us is the week after Labor Day, now we're gonna have to probably push.
So they're gonna come before us, and then they're gonna come and, and do a, an open meeting for the public.
They'll be able to give us a date then, probably when they come on the fifteenth.
Yeah, we had a, we, we had a Zoom hearing today on this, Mark was in attendance, I was in attendance. Bob was in attendance, Jeff, Karen, Kathy Williams, did I forget anybody?
No, I, that was it, I think.
Pretty much it. And, so I'm glad you, yeah, they're gonna come in and give us a, a, so, you know, a, so, in the selectmen's hearing forum. And then we're gonna have a public forum, so that'll be good. And then, believe it or not, from there we catapult to September 12th, but that's pretty scary. What about, I'm just looking at this list at the end. Where do we stand with this special municipal employee designation, that's kind of been hanging around for quite a while. Last I heard, I thought we were gonna see what other boards may benefit from being classified as special employees. Does anybody know why, I mean, how that's, why that stalled?
I have no interest in, unless it, unless it's generated from the administration, I, I have no reason to see it on the agenda. I mean, I'm really, it's really dependent on Bob and the administration, in my view. If they see us having a need to designate certain committees, then I would just as soon look to them to sort of lay out the basis for it. At one time, it was considered something that might be needed, I think in the case of the, the Community and Economic Development Committee. But then that fell by the wayside with some of the changes in, in appointees. So I, I, as far as I'm concerned, we can cross that off the list.
All right, let's move on then, let's do town individual items, Mark, you got anything?
No, other than just what I had to say about the, the zoning board.
Yeah?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Marcus?
I'm good.
Well, pass as well, we'll go to town administrator updates.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, a couple of items, I wanna make sure the board is updated on some of our major recruitments that we've been working on for some time. But I'm real happy that we've really kicked things off on the finance director with our new consultant who is on board. The position is being advertised, we reviewed the, the job description, opened up the advertisement to a couple of other publications. The Government Finance Officers Association, but more importantly, this Paradigm Associates is conducting a number of finance director. Recruitments around the Commonwealth, one as close as Chatham. And my feeling is that, you know, rather than, than view that as kind of a negative, as, you know, all these different towns looking for finance directors. I'm hoping that by using this firm, they're gonna be able to generate a number of candidates that we'll be able to find one that has the best fit here. And I personally think that because of the nature of our finance department, that if we had some candidates that, you know, were available. I think that we would compete extremely well. And, you know, I, I know since we filled that position last, salaries have increased quite a bit, so we might be confronted with that. But I just wanna say the consultant has the process, we interviewed for months, couldn't come up with any good candidates. But I think what they're doing is actually getting on the phone and calling people and networking, and so we'll keep you posted on that, it's being advertised now. Probably before, you know, too long, we'll have a good update on where we sit for candidates there. We're also moving ahead, we did have a very successful, I felt, recruitment process for attracting candidates on the communications director. And we, we must have seventeen or so, what I consider to be very qualified candidates, so it's kind of a disaster of riches in that case. And so what we're doing is, we're working on, you know, having some informal meetings with people, trying to hone that down to a number of finalists. That is, I guess, you know, more doable for a full interview process, so that's the first thing, we're just trying to win those down. But some of the people are very, very impressed with, and I, I think the board is gonna be as well, so. Those two are moving forward and, and they're, I think the two highest priorities that we have right now in getting those positions filled. The communications director looks to be a little bit ahead, but the, the finances, we're hoping to see some good candidates for that, maybe not as many, but some good candidates. And I wanted to, to point out, I.
Well, before you go.
Yes.
What, what are we posting the finance director position at?
The.
For a range?
Yeah, you know, the, the consultant was pushing us for the $150,000 range to, to start that job.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and, and they, they wanted to know if, if we'd be able to go higher than that. And I, I indicated that, you know, maybe for the perfect candidate, but that was sort of the range that we were looking in. And, and that's a jump from, you know, I, I guess the, the, just the, the range that's in the classification plan starts at around a hundred. So, you know, it's kind of in the high range, but they're, they're telling me that, that for, for that position, that that's your minimum. So that's probably what we're looking at.
Yeah, I'd go along with that.
And, yeah, you try, you know, you wanna be conservative, but I, I don't wanna make it so people aren't applying, and, and that's what they felt. If we advertise what, you know, our class plan says, people just wouldn't apply.
Yeah, no, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think we just need to be always cognizant of what the other towns are paying. That's why I'm glad that we're keeping our town administrator's salary on the higher end, because I'm looking at what Chatham and some of the other towns are paying, they're administrators. And, you know, they're around $200,000, and finance director.
You gotta be competitive.
Finance directors are going up there as well, and so, you know, we just need to be prepared for maybe having to make a move on the salary side. I hope is that Mr. Lynch can recruit us a good candidate or two.
And it's true, I'm actually one of the lower paid town administrators in our, in our area, I got no complaints.
See what you started, Mark?
What's that?
See what you started?
Totally, totally happy.
It's all tied together.
We gave them five percent tonight, he's telling us it's not enough.
I'm, I, listen, I keep track of town administrator salaries, they're in the $200,000 range, you know? And, see, what happens is, is all of our other key department heads, their salaries need to fall in behind the administrator. So, we, we need to be in a, in a competitive position. If we fall back, then we're, we're gonna, we're gonna have problems in a variety of areas, yeah, so I, I apologize if I started something, but.
All right.
It's something that we need to be aware of.
This is, this is my report, okay? I'm gonna take it back.
I'm trying to advocate for more money and what does he look, what's he doing, he's, he's blowing it off.
He's doing the right thing.
Okay, well, hey, listen, this one actually involves Mark as well, because he and I had some conversations and. Mark had attended the Hyannis Park Civic Association annual meeting this past weekend and had, you know, briefed me on a couple of their issues. But I had also, I've been having, you know, ongoing communications with the Civic Association regarding airport-related issues. We have obviously been just doing a tremendous amount of work studying their master planning process. And the, I, I think we've made a lot of progress on some of the operational issues, and those things are gonna come up, you know, when we have our community meeting on the airport. But growing concern is out there in the community, and especially in this particular neighborhood, about some of the impacts of the PFAS. That are emanating from the plumes that, you know, people have a lot of confusion as to whether a specific plume is emanating from the airport. Or it's emanating from the county fire training facility. And I, I've looked and, and I can, I can show you, this is really fascinating, this particular one, and if you pass that around. It, it clearly shows, if you study it for a second, that the plumes are converging. Whether there's two point sources, there's the, your airport source, and then there's your training facility that's coming around the back of it. And they're both winding up in the same place, sort of heading right towards Mill Creek, Bayview Boggs, and Lewis Bay, all right through that, that neighborhood. And what we have in our community, we've been singularly focused on the impact of these PFAS chemicals on the public water supplies. And, you know, our team has been doing just a tremendous job of, you know, finding those impacts, treating them. But, but the PFAS concerns that we have, our wells are not down gradient from these particular plumes. So we're a little bit safe in terms of, these ones have impacted the Maher wells in Barnstable, but not Yarmouth Water Supplies. But people are increasingly concerned, we had a meeting with the association today and, and our, our town team of, with Jeff and, and Laurie. To share our information and sort of dovetail our, our efforts, and, and that's one of the things that we learned is that. Folks are aware that these PFAS plumes are out there. They're not 100% concerned immediately with the drinking water quality, you know, because people have that data. But they're concerned with the recreational impacts in the Mill Creek area, which is a huge recreational area. They're concerned with having that material in groundwater near their homes and. It is a very difficult situation because we don't have standards from the DEP that establish specific performance things. So, we're trying to work with this neighborhood association to, first and foremost, get a better characterization for where this PFAS is, where it's going. Interestingly enough, that, that map, which, I looked at another map, now, to me, this is fascinating. It shows the shape of the plumes, and, and there's a number of monitoring wells for the PFAS. Now, they're all in Barnstable. Even though the plumes are sort of emanating down into West Yarmouth. There's really no monitoring wells south of the plume to determine what those impacts are. And so, what, what we were thinking, and I, I promised the association, I'd, I'd brief the board on, you know, these types of conversations. And, and make sure people are aware and, and, you know, understand what some of these concerns are. And I was almost thinking that potentially, you know, it, it may be a good idea, Mark and I were sort of talking about this a little bit. To partner with the association with some type of correspondence, potentially to the DEP. First of all, you know, we need to be clear that these two sites are registered contamination sites in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And as such, they are under the jurisdiction of the DEP, they have active case management, they have licensed site professionals, they're doing what testing they're being required to do. And, and people are looking towards us, well, well, why don't you define where the rest of this plume is going through in, in Yarmouth? And I, I think what might be more appropriate is to kind of partner with local residents and, and maybe send correspondence to the DEP. And indicate some of these concerns that, look, we'd like to see some additional monitoring in Yarmouth to determine what direction the chemicals are going in. We'd like to see what guidance that you may have for the presence of these chemicals in groundwater that's not, you know, in a public well. And, you know, not in a, a negative or accusatory tone, but to understand that this is all a developing science. The regulations on PFAS, where's the PFAS, where's it going, what impact? And, and to maybe reach out and seize a little more help from DEP and sort of characterize in that. And it may be a way to stay together with our local residents that are looking for more engagement with the town, but not quite sure what to ask for. So I wanted to, you know, it's an awareness issue, we're engaged in these discussions, I think we need a little more data, a little more help. I think we need a little more data, a little more help. There needs to be more scientific analysis. This is very similar. It reminds me of, you know, the early days where I worked with the Mass Military Reservation. And, you know, we weren't sure of exactly what the toe, where these various plumes were going for some of the contaminants. And, you know, we had to work long and hard to, to first characterize where the plumes were, where they're heading. And, and I think this is a similar case. Not that the PFAS is as dangerous as some of the chemicals that we faced, but there certainly is an elevated health risk associated with them. And, and I think it would behoove us to get some more data on it. So I don't know, Mark, if that characterizes a lot of the discussions you've had, but it.
Well, at, yeah, at the, at the annual meeting, this is clearly a hot item. I would recommend that, that you draft a letter on behalf of the board to the DEP expressing concern about the PFAS possibly migrating into Yarmouth. Or at least that's what we're concerned about. And urge them to take a robust investigation of the contamination here. I, I think we want to weigh in support of our residents who have the same concern because I think there is a Harvard study or another study that's out there that suggests that PFAS from both of the sites may have migrated into Mill Creek.
Yeah.
And so I, I think that alone should be sufficient reason to urge them to aggressively investigate.
I think the Harvard study says that clearly the PFAS in Mill Creek has come from the use of the foam.
Right.
Right? I'm not so sure they, they go beyond that, do they?
No, I mean, I, there was nothing that I read in the study that differentiated the foam from between the airport and the training facility. But clearly, they've identified it as, as the foam.
Right. They, they, to me, I read the study as implicating.
And it's present for sure in, in Mill, Mill Pond.
Typically, when you get a trace like that, what you do is you do more wells, more investigating. That's, to me, you know, I spent 26 years working on Otis cleanup issues, and that was the normal course. You pick up a monitoring well, you pick up a trace, you've got a sample. What that means is you do more investigation to find out what's going on, where it is. And so to me, that's an indicator that they haven't fully characterized the problems here. So I, I think a letter drafted to DEP on our behalf, since DEP is literally right now looking at what more investigations DEP, excuse me, the airport and the county need to undertake. This is not a bad time to just say, hey, we're concerned about this too. That's, that's what I think. And.
Yeah, one of, one of the major points that, that Harvard study, which is incredibly technical and difficult to read, it's almost like learning a foreign language in one lesson. But one of, one of the points they made at the outset was it's very difficult to determine the source of PFAS because they mentioned it can come from so many different places.
Well, think about this, Mike. Look at this site. I, I think there may be other PFAS sources. It's a very industrial area. That well field, the Meyer wells pumps at a rate of 3 million gallons a day, which means it's sucking in a lot of water from God knows where. I bet you the zona contribution from that well is very large and encompasses a very large area. So it could be multiple sources coming in.
The dioxine, that's another very dangerous chemical. There's a, there's the PFAS plume and there's a dioxine plume that's coming from the industrial area adjacent to the airport.
Right.
And, and that's impacting those Barnstable wells as, as well. So just something to be aware of.
Right.
You know, is there any legal liability for contaminants moving from one town to another?
I, the, the liability is to remediate. Both the county and the airport are parties that are regulated under DEP and they have responsibilities to address their cont. So it's not like anybody's escaping it. Where these, where these groundwater contamination problems get tricky or difficult is when you have insufficient monitoring and investigative work done to characterize where the contamination is. Like I said, I did 26 years worth of sort of congressional oversight on groundwater contamination problems at the military base. And I think if there's something that we've, that I've learned from that is that we tend to underestimate and not fully appreciate where the area of contamination is. And it always makes, it makes far greater sense to be more aggressive on the investigative side, given everything that's already been determined, everything that we know. So to me, what, what frustrates me, I, I feel like a frustrated Hyannis Park Civic Association resident because what's taking so long to do some additional monitoring and more investigation in this area? As a town official, I'm frustrated because I'd be surprised if the PFAS isn't migrating into Yarmouth. That's what I'm worried about. I mean, I think it is. I mean, it's showing up in Mill Creek. So clearly, look at the gap, look at the real estate between Mill Creek and where, you know, where it's been detected, you know, by the airport. There's a significant stretch of land there where you can't tell me nothing. There's got to be something in there. So, yeah, I think, I think some aggressive investigative work needs to be done in that area east of the Meyer wells. And I honestly believe because the wells pump at such a high rate and draw in a lot, it draws in a lot of water from a very large area that it wouldn't surprise me to see other potential contributors. What's critically important is that there are a lot of folks that are very interested. Some of them are sort of emotion. There is a lot of emotion in this. And I think the more the DEP can get their hands on facts, the more it can be helpful in, in driving the best course of remediating this stuff. But no one's getting away with anything. It's just, it's getting it done in a timely way. Yeah, that's the problem.
It's been coming this way for 20 years, right? And.
Well, who, who knows?
We're still in a position where we don't have the.
We're operating under the impression, here's this, you know, I know folks can't see this on TV, but we're operating under the impression that the PFAS has only moved that far, all right? Now, think about it. If, if the PFAS and the airport was dumped, you know, over a period of 30, 40 years, and same with the, the fire training area and groundwater, the groundwater moves at a pretty brisk pace here. I'm, I, I would find it hard to believe that it's only gone this far. Clearly, it's crossed over. And that's why DEP needs to aggressively investigate this. So I'm, I'm, I'm all in favor of us weighing in and calling for more wells and a much more ambitious investigative effort down gradient of the Meyer wells in Yarmouth. That's, that's conservation land, County Yarmouth Conservation Land, the Mill Pond Marshes. Needs to be, we need, you know, we, we need to take an active interest in protecting, you know, our community. So I would recommend drafting a letter and we vote on it and put it on the agenda for our next meeting, Mr. Chairman.
He's not going to be here.
Well, Bill, Bill will be able to speak to it.
If, if you can't, you know, I know you, you're going away, but if you can't, we'll do it for the meeting after that. See what you can do.
Sure will. And so that's all I have for tonight, but it's very interesting stuff. And I, and I just want to say too, I know the board has been, you know, sort of urging. And I, I feel that between, we've got, you know, a little team, you know, really our technical people are the engineers. And Jeff and Laurie are, you know, very intelligent in interpreting this information. And, and we're working together and including, you know, expanding the partnerships that we developed through our wastewater project with the community organizations to really try to get a partnership together here in this community that, you know, raises it to a higher level in terms of our ability to cope with some of these contamination and water quality issues. It's a real priority and a lot of people are spending a lot of time looking at it very closely.
Okay, you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All is in paper?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.